Good evening. Welcome to the Ashland Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, June 11th, 2020. We are in the virtual online meeting room under the governor's exception to the open meeting law due to the COVID-19 state of emergency. We have a fairly busy meeting tonight. I should state for the record that this meeting is being recorded by WACA and being broadcast and streamed by them, and we thank them for that. On our agenda, we have at 7:15 a public hearing on Whittamore Estates subdivision as a modification to a subdivision that was approved a number of years ago but not constructed. At 7:45, we have a continued public hearing on Phase 2 of 81 West Union Street as the project, Phase 2 of the project where there's the big new storage building in front of the middle school. And we also have a discussion on the status of construction on 128 Main Street. There are a number of concerns raised at our last meeting about discrepancies between what was approved by the planning board and what is being built. We have a modification to a scenic road permit for 433 Chestnut, a review of 12 Pond Street, and a discussion of downtown zoning grant minutes and other administrative type matters tonight. With that, let us start with the public hearing for Whittamore Estates. And let me read the hearing notice since this is the opening of the hearing. The Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 11th, 2020 at 7:15 PM to hear the petition of A&amp;J Realty Investments LLC requesting a subdivision plan modifications, modification per Chapter 41, Section 81K through 81GG of Massachusetts General Law and Chapter 344 subdivision of land of the Ashland bylaws. The applicant is seeking to modify the Whittamore Estates subdivision plan previously approved in 2016. The proposed modifications include adding a sanitary sewer connection to municipal sewer through a private easement to Brogdon Road. The proposed modification plans includes the extending the cul-de-sac roadway length by 95 feet and adding an additional building lot. The property in question is located off of Whittamore Drive, Assessor's Map 12, Lot 207, in the residential A zoning district and floodplain overlay district. Parties wishing to be heard on this matter should submit comments to the planning board ahead of time and/or appear at the time and place indicated above this meeting. Materials may be viewed at Town Hall during normal business hours or preferably at the town website. For more information or to submit comments, contact Peter Matcek, the town planner, and his phone number or email address, which I don't believe I need to read. All right. With that said, I will turn this over to the applicant to let us know what it is they want to do and give us an overview. And I think you're muted.
Well said.
That's better.
I'm George Connors. With me tonight is going to be Vito Colonna, our engineer. I represent A&amp;J Investments, the owner of the property. Prior to Vito going through the process, project, I'd just like to ask, are we going to have any foreseeable change to the memberships over the next couple, three meetings?
Yes, we are. I am having my last meeting presumably this week because I am not seeking reelection to this position. So my last day is next Wednesday, or, I'm sorry, a week from next Wednesday.
And where would that leave us relative to a quorum?
Peter, you can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is since this is not a special permit, it requires three votes, and it would be effectively a four-member board, assuming that Phil, who is not able to be here for this, catches up by watching the recording or reading the minutes.
Yeah, I would say, you know, Phil, the member is not here. He's still a member of the board. To get a fourth member in, he could sign the Mullen Joel affidavit, George. But right now, there are four members, I mean, there's three members that are participating. And so if you went ahead to open up the hearing tonight, you would obviously have, continue to have a quorum. This isn't a special permit. So what you do, I don't have my book in front of me regarding the votes for a modification to a subdivision, but I know we would be able to continue with four votes. If things change, obviously we'd have to re-advertise.
That's satisfactory to me. We can continue and have Vito now present the plan.
Sure. Can I share the screen?
Yep. I've made your co-host, Vito.
Okay. Okay. Can everyone see the plans now?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll start at the beginning here. So just to recap, I don't know if everyone on the board now is familiar with the project or not. This was a subdivision approved several years ago, and it's located off Whittamore Drive. Over here to the side is High Street. This is the kind of vacant land. There were some A&amp;R lots previously developed, all those new houses that were kind of in a line right there on Whittamore Drive. So this is all the backland behind that. And if you go down to the... Okay, so right now, what was approved was a seven-lot subdivision in the back, and they were all serviced by onsite septic systems and onsite wells. And the size of the lots and the septic systems, that kind of drove kind of everything. And now there's an opportunity to get access to sewer down from Brogdon Lane, which is down to the south of the page right now. And with that opportunity, we could eliminate the need for onsite septic systems, which would also eliminate a lot of the earthwork, reduce some clearing, and make for an overall better development. And with that, we would also have the opportunity to have one additional building lot. And essentially, that would kind of offset the costs for, you know, extending the sewer down into that location. So just briefly on the sewer connection itself, it's down, see, up in the upper left-hand corner, it's kind of a cut sheet. It's a little difficult to kind of put them two together. But basically, it comes down the road, down, if you can see my cursor, comes down the bottom of the page and would extend up on the upper left of the page and goes down into Brogdon Road. And there's an existing sewer manhole down in that location, and there's an existing easement that runs up through those private properties that abuts up to this subdivision. So we couldn't get it through gravity flow, so it would all be through private individual pump stations and a force main, common force main would go down there. So we would keep these outside the right-of-way. It would all be privately maintained by the residents within this part of the subdivision. And like we said, it would basically be so we could eliminate the need for those large septic systems. The soils out here are marginal, you know, they do pass. We did design septics out there that would function, but the soils are not the greatest. Anyone who's familiar with the area knows that, and it's high groundwater, so there's a lot of fill required and a lot of earth disturbances with that. Other than that, there's not much from modifications to the plan. The alignment's exactly the same as the road. It's just extended an extra, you know, almost about 100 feet or 90 feet. The stormwater management system stays almost identical. The only change is the detention basin down on the left hand of the page, would it get extended, get widened out by, I think it's two feet, just to gain a little bit extra volume to accommodate that little bit extra roadway? You probably wouldn't even notice it if we didn't point out the differences. That's how, you know, minor the changes are to the drainage system. And then, other than that, there's really not much for changes, you know, to the actual layout and the plans themselves. The open space stays generally the same. I think you've actually gained a slight increase in open space, but it's kind of a wash. It's basically the same as we had previously proposed. I think that that's kind of an overall summary, just kind of brief and quick. I don't know if you want to get to questions or if George had anything else to add from, you know, the application end. You know, other than that, we can kind of get right into board comments, questions.
I'd just like to point out that it has steeply sloping grades up there, which complicate or increase the amount of earthwork, and this sewer connection would work to reduce a lot of the clearing, partly because of that slope.
Yeah. If you can see on the plan, we have testing that's, some of the testing's way up here on the top of the slope, and actually, one of the septic system designs was up, way up here, and it takes a lot of fill and a lot of extra clearing to get some of those systems in. And you can see, as George was saying, with all the, these are the topography lines. It is fairly steep going across the site.
That's all I had.
Yep. All right. What is the total length of the road originally and with the changes? It was, I think it was 630 feet. I don't have the number exactly in front of me, and the new one is 765. And Peter, what does our bylaw have the limit for? Is it 500 feet? Or is, am I remembering that incorrect?
Eight hundred.
Eight?
It's eight hundred. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so you don't need a waiver on the road length then?
No.
Okay. And, yes?
I just kind of want to, one of the things I think we need to kind of go over, it's a fairly large point, and it's come up in some of the comments, is that the width of the easement that would connect the sewer, the proposed sewer to Brogdon Road extension. First off, on this plan, it is noted that it's a 30-foot sewer, but however, once it crosses over onto private property, it is then a 10-foot wide easement. Our bylaws require a 10-foot, I mean, 30-foot easements, and that's within the subdivision regulations. So I just kind of want to make a note to that, and obviously, I would let Vito and George respond to that. And then, in addition, I do want to put out the fact that Brogdon Road extension was a two-lot subdivision approved by this board, I believe in 2008. There's two house lots that have been developed off of that roadway. However, that cul-de-sac, that roadway is still owned privately. It has not been accepted by the town.
Okay. I think 2018, not 2008.
I'm sorry, yes, 2018. Yes, but those are just two points that I think that, you know, were skipped over and that I think need to be brought up to light.
I'd like to ask, I'd just like to ask just a clarifying question, Peter, to make sure that I understand that. So the proposed, the easement is only 10 feet for a portion of it, of the run where the sewer line would go, and the subdivision bylaws require a 30-foot easement, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the, as proposed to us tonight, right now, would require an additional waiver on a modification with regard to the subdivision?
It's not a town-owned easement in this case, Joe, however, so there's a little bit of, there's two ways to kind of think of this easement, to look at this easement. It's a private easement, so the town is not going to take control of this easement. And so therefore, you can kind of look at it as a private versus a public easement. If this was going to be an easement taken by the town, a town easement, such as a drainage easement to maintain the subdivision basin in the back, the town would require a 30-foot easement.
Got it.
In this case, it's a private easement, and the easement was secured, I believe, at the time in 2016, when this subdivision was first proposed and approved. However, the DPW is always, has always had issues with the width of the easement. So therefore, it always has the proposal. And mind you, and Vito is, and thank you, Vito, for kind of circling in, or I would say, really focusing in on the easement. It's really the area from the match line, which would be the property line from Whittamore Estates, also known as Burnham Circle, to the connection to the Brogdon Road extension, where that sewer connection is.
Is there also a pump station with this sewer, or is it gravity-fed?
It's a force main, it's a force main sewer.
Yeah, so the individual pump stations on each lot with one common, with a common force main. So I don't know if you're familiar with like an E1-type system, that's the common brand out there, but there's many manufacturers. But it's basically each house has its own pump. Is there a reason that the DPW is not saying that this could be a town infrastructure? Because I don't think we have cases of private sewer like this elsewhere with subdivisions in town that I'm aware of.
So in this case, Preston, I don't know, I don't know, and I could have a deeper discussion with Doug and Dan Mauer of the DPW. However, because it's, the way it is being proposed, yes, it's the private, it would be a homeowners association. And so if there was ever a failure, it would be the homeowners association, who would, membership would be the seven or eight house lots, who would therefore be responsible for maintaining and/or repairing. Now, in the circumstance, if there was a failure and the DPW was called and the DPW had to go out there, the DPW may or may not, A, take part in the work, but B, if they did, they would have to therefore then invoice the homeowners association for any work to be done. You know, George, I don't know if you want to respond to that, but in my eyes, that's something that I think, you know, would have to happen, you know, if there was a circumstance of a public health hazard.
We are going to have a homeowners association. I think there's a document that you have with you on that. I understand that the DPW is not in favor of these. They've been used in all over the country and many areas around here. Ones are simply a pump in a tank outside the house, and they pump into a common pipeline. There'll be a common pipeline coming down on the right side of the road and the left side of the road connecting in at the base of the cul-de-sac, so it won't be in the town right of way, and then it'll continue on to Brogdon. But our methodology is that it is a pump system that is a part of the sewer system for the lot, not unlike a septic system, except that it goes to the municipal sewer. And there was an easement granted for it, that they chose not to exercise until this particular phase of the project, where, one, the planning board about a year ago talked about the amount of tree clearing, and finally, Mr. Feliciano, the developer, the current developer, has weighed in on that to try and reduce that, and the fact that the septic systems are extraordinarily expensive. So for those two reasons, you're going forward. I hear Peter say that if the DPW did have to go out there in some emergency, and they would be able to charge the homeowners. We can certainly add that into the homeowners association if that becomes an issue. I think it's probably a good idea.
My initial reaction, and since we're probably not voting on this tonight, I'm probably not unvoting on it, but I, since I'm still a member, I'm still going to participate as if I were at this point. If there's no pumping, once the sewage leaves the owners' lots, my gut instinct is we should find a way to make this town infrastructure once it leaves the lots. Because that simplifies things for everyone. You know, there's no question of having to have a homeowners association and deal with it. It puts the residents of these lots on the same footing as residents in anywhere else in town. It just, I just don't see a good reason for it being private infrastructure unless you are doing something that isn't up to town standards. And I'd like to hear the DPW weigh in more heavily on, if you were saying this were to be a town sewer, once Brogdon Lane is accepted, and once this is accepted, what would you need to do differently? That's what I'd like to hear.
Well, I think the first thing would have to be a 30-foot easement, and we don't have control over that.
I understand that. But, you know, if that's the only reason, I don't know if there's a way of working around that, negotiating something with the property owner. I don't know how sensitive the DPW would be if we said, can we waive this and deal with it because it's such a short distance? I don't know. But if we can make the DPW happy and the landowner happy and have an easement that works for everyone and have it be town infrastructure, I think that simplifies this whole request for everyone.
My reaction pressed into that is, you know, the town doesn't like the proposed setup, but DPW's opinion of these is, it doesn't really love that, the proposed setup here. And so people are going to come in and buy these homes, and, you know, they're going to, this isn't a condo. There's no monthly fee. There's no, there's no homeowners association for the street that's going to put money in a pot, but they're, you know, on the hook for this sewer system. And then conversely, if it becomes the town's property, now the town's inheriting a piece of infrastructure that, right now, DPW's saying, really don't like to do it this way. So I, I mean, to me, it feels like we're, we're trying to, it feels like we're trying to do it a way that nobody likes or doesn't necessarily favor homeowner of the town, so that we don't put in sewer system, septic systems, and we can build another lot. I just, I'm, I'm not sure why, you know, if you want the town to accept the infrastructure, it should be done in a way that is acceptable to DPW and to the town. Not an expert on this, but like, that's my read based on this so far.
Yeah, Joe, I think we're saying the same thing from opposite angles.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I would like to see this built to town standards and then be town sewer once the road is accepted. You know, having private infrastructure that's in the right-of-way, that's going to be, is this eventually, I thought this was going to be a public road, or am I mistaken?
It is.
Yeah, so it's going to be.
It's a public road, but the sewer is not in.
Oh, the sewer is in.
It's not in it.
Yeah, it, it's, well, it's going to be on one side or the other, and then it's going to be, you know, people's lines are still crossing under it, you know, it's still.
No, no.
Or is there two separate lines?
We're going to keep basically one line on each side of the road outside the right-of-way, and then at the end of the road, wrap around and connect them together. So it'd keep all the infrastructure out of the right-of-way, essentially.
Okay.
And then one. So it'd all be on private land, basically, everything.
Yes.
I can see that then. Yeah, I still think it would be a lot simpler if it were just, you know, if people had their own pumps, pumped it into the sewer down the middle of the road, and the town had the easements, and, you know, it became town sewer once it left the lots. So if you can find a way to make that happy, make that happen, I think a lot of people are going to be happier with the ultimate outcome.
We did have.
Just, that's just my opinion, so.
We did have a technical review meeting with this. I've talked to the sewer and water department and Doug Small on this a number of times, and they are not in favor of it, basically because the 10-foot easement. They also had some questions about running water through it. It's not wide enough for that. And I think Dan Moore looked at the map when we were at the technical review meeting, and the connection or reinforcing the water loop was not of any concern to them whatsoever because it wasn't needed. But their reaction to this sewer line, basically because of the 10-foot easement, is something that we've talked to them many times. I think Peter was there at that technical review, maybe about nine or 10 weeks ago.
Yeah, no, I can vouch for that. And I, and George, I believe I sent you the email from Dan Mauer, as well as to the board members, and I have got an email from Doug Small late in the day today, which I can read. If I can, however, I'm sharing the screen with Vito, so I can't get to my email. So, but it pretty much states, you know, that the DPW has high concerns about the 10-foot wide easement.
And then, in addition to sewer, this would bring, this would bring this subdivision onto municipal water supply as well?
No.
No.
It would still be on private wells, but on, but being connected to the municipal sewer system?
Yes.
Got it.
That's something new, because normally, your sewer rate is based on your water usage, assuming that the water usage corresponds to what you actually send down the sewer.
How are they going to, how are they going to charge for that?
Yeah, we, yeah, we have to figure out, DPW is going to have to tell us how that they're prepared to put meters on people's private water so that we can bill the sewer.
They'd be part of the control system for the pump operation, a meter that would tell us how.
We'll have to get DPW to say that that's an acceptable method for them for billing.
So I'm sorry, George, you'd said you would need to put a meter on the control system? Is that what you said?
Yeah, lots of.
The control system would be where, like, that's, we're not talking about the private pumps. We're talking about a down-the-line control system?
No, no, the private pumps, when the pumps go on, they would register what.
The meter would be on the private pumps?
Yes. Like a water meter on a water line at the, just sewer and stuff.
I know it feels pretty sticky.
The sewage always does.
Yeah. I'd really like to hear more from DPW.
I have some questions too, coming from the other direction of things. It'd be nice to have the former plan with the seven lots to compare with as well, to see what's kind of happening to these lots. I appreciate the, the not wanting to clear so many trees. Obviously, that's becoming increasingly important, both in Ashland and beyond. So that's a good thing. It weighs in positively. But when I start to look at some of these lots, this shape of lots, I'm sure they're all within what they need to be, but they seem, given the tough landscape in this area, they seem to cram in things in odd ways. And so, say for Lot 7, you know, for the size of house, it's probably, you know, allowed on that lot. The lot, the usable lot itself is quite small and not really in the spirit of maybe these type of lots. I also wonder about Lot 10, which seems to, I know the house box is just a symbol of where the house might be. I'm looking at the drawing set here that I have open on another window. But the house box on Lot 10 is shown, because of that setback, the 100-foot setback line is shown right on the line, and I'm wondering about the flexibility of putting houses on these lots, and by making them smaller, it makes that just that much more difficult on already kind of challenging lots. Finally, I think Lot 11, the one that has the easement going through it as well, is, becomes, effectively becomes a small lot because it's divided in two. So I'm a bit hesitant about, though I like the, I like the fact that we wouldn't have to clear cut so much, and of course, we'd want some kind of guarantee. So I'm, I'm a bit hesitant about, though I like that, I like the fact that we wouldn't have to clear cut so much and of course we'd want some kind of guarantee with that, that, that these let, these, you know, that as much as possible would be left, if, if that's the, if that's part of the arrangement. But the house, the lots themselves, when you try to get another one in there, hmm, not, not the best work, I, I don't think. And I understand that this is what, this is what's there. But I'm a little hesitant about the way they're squeezed in and if they're effectively really in the spirit of what these lot sizes are supposed to provide in terms of how you set a house on it.
I think Vito can talk about lot sizes and the dimensions, but I think that clearly by picking out septic systems and having roughly the same house on the lot, we were able to do the same thing in either case.
One, one question about the tree clearing before, just before we respond to Tricia, like, how much of this has been cleared already? Like, are, is this, what's built? Are some of these built already?
None of the lots are built out yet. They did clear for the roadway and that's under construction right now. And they cleared to do the, the detention basin down at the bottom also. And I didn't go out there recently, so I don't know the extents of where they've cleared to date. But we could check in on that.
Yeah, because I, you know, Tricia, to your comment about the trees, I, I do recall, I do recall this project in a, in a prior year and I do recall a conversation about trying to drive down some of the clear cutting and, you know, the comment was, well, the wells and the sewer and the septic systems drive a lot of that. So I, I'm in agreement with you that, you know, less cutting would, would be important. I'd also note that in the original subdivision agreement, there was a waiver on the tree, using inappropriate term, there was a waiver for the, the tree census for certain trees in the right of way and so forth.
Yeah, so a- a- as far as the, you know, development of each lot, you know, a lot of these lots are the same as we previously had and we had approved septic systems and everything designed on them. Seven, eight and nine, I think got a little bit wider, not too much, but just a, a touch wider. And lots 13 and 14 essentially stay the same. And then it's just basically down the end where we went from two lots to three. And we did that because of the extended roadway length. So you got a little bit extra room to do the development. We could, you know, just so you could get more comfortable with it, show some schematic development on there. You know, just so you feel more comfortable, what, what fits, you know, just to see what the, the intent is, that would help.
So where did, where did you say it went from? Where did you say it went from two lots to three?
It's basically down near the end.
10, 11, 12?
Yeah, 10, 11, 12. Because the road used to end up at, say, around the beginning of the cul-de-sac bulb and now that extends further down.
Okay.
You know, previously on, we had a development plan with all the lots already designed out with all the houses and everything. The, the house for 11A was right in this kind of area right here anyway. We haven't laid out a house on 12 or 10 yet, but we had layouts that worked on, you know, seven through nine and 13 and 14.
Yeah, I think I'm looking at drawings dated April 10th, 2020. So they have a house box on each lot.
Yeah, we, on the old plan though, we had done full layouts with grading and driveways, septics, everything.
You think it'd just be easy to see that, to really see the difference between what's.
Yeah, nothing too detailed, but something close so you can get an idea of what, what they're thinking, make sure it all fits.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it'd be helpful because I think each of these schemes have their pluses and minuses. There's advantages and disadvantages both ways.
You have the septics, right, Vito? You have all the septics designed for the.
Right. That's what I was saying. So we can, that's easy enough to show and then we can compare that to what a development may look like with, with these, you know, showing where houses could go, what the limit of clearing would be. You know, show the, the differences.
Uh, if I could share my screen for a second, I can show the old plan.
Yep, uh, let's see, how do I do that?
You just, just stop screen share.
All right.
Be red up at the top.
Uh, there it is. There we go.
There. So I believe this is the old plan. And so you can see how, uh, seven, eight, nine look essentially identical as far as I can tell. And 12 and 13 are very similar. The line may have moved slightly. And of course, the cul-de-sac itself is pushed down so that it's closer to this corner here. And then you've got, you've got a lot here and then you've got two lots out of, out of over here. A couple of other changes I noticed related to this is there was this, uh, between 10 and 11, there was a, an easement that would allow a connection to the planned trail through the open space. Uh, and that is, is gone. But I also noticed that the easement over here for the open space, uh, which where it gets fairly tight with one of the, the neighbor's property is a wider easement, which is very helpful for the trail. I'm also on the Upper Charles Trail Committee, so I'm, this is something I'm particularly concerned about personally. So I, I wanted to make sure that was clear. One thing that would occur to me is since the cul-de-sac now gets pretty close to this corner of the easement, the open space, if you put in a small easement there right along the, the property lines, then potentially we could add trail access for the residents here once the trail is built. It's just a, a suggestion. It's, it's not a vital part of the plan as far as I'm concerned, but it would be a nice to have. But yeah, essentially, yeah, it's making the road a little longer, squeezing other lot out. And if not for the complications of the sewer, I, I don't see how this would impact the residents on Whittamore. You know, they have one more house worth of cars coming in and out, but the real changes are as far away from them as you can get. So I'm going to stop my share.
What would be, what would be the impact on the houses built on Brogdon? Because those are, those are in place now. Those are built.
Joe, that would just be a, a redrawing of the easement. And so that the private homeowner would have to grant the eas, grant a new easement indoor, I would say modify the existing easement to, to shift it from a 10 feet to a 30-foot easement, I would say.
I wasn't even going there, Peter. I, I was just saying more of, how much will it impact, you know, how much, how much impact to that, to those two homes would there be? How, you know, what's the, what's the impact on those people?
Yeah, those two are down in the bottom of the screen, this location. There is that well in between this development and those houses. There's a well that runs up right here. And the house that would be on lot 11A is generally in the same location. It's a little bit further back than it would have been on the old development. I think the old development, the house would have been about kind of right in there. But now it's going to be back a little bit further, but nothing substantially different as far as proximity to the houses down in, on Brogdon.
And then, and if they made the easement go straight from the cul-de-sac to the connection rather than doing a little.
Kind of over in this.
More room for a house would be on the side of their lot? Is that anything that, or is that, they can make it wider?
We could, you know, we could look at that option. We were trying to get around the wetland. This has, there's a wetland right here and there's a narrow stretch right at the bottom. So we were trying to cross at the narrowest point. We could look at, you know, tighten it up a little bit, getting closer, but we'd still like to cross down in that narrow stretch down there, just to minimize those kind of impacts too. But we could look at maybe rerouting, you know, move it over a little bit to get a better box up in here for development.
Might be able to get a wider easement and still be able to put the same house.
Yep.
That easement's 30 feet there.
Yeah.
I assume all the lots have the 150-foot frontage and meet all of the other zoning requirements.
Yep.
And all the houses will be built according to all the setbacks and all that will be. That's got to be.
The setback lines are on the plan, the little dashed lines that parallel lot lines in the street line.
Yeah, my biggest concern is DPW because they're the ones that are going to have to deal with this at one point or another, it seems like.
Private sewer easements are used in condominiums all over the state. I don't think that's much different than the homeowners association, same as a condominium maintaining the store. We also have a homeowners association taking care of the drainage basins around the entire.
But in a condominium situation, there's condominium dues which provide funding to deal with such issues in the event where it needs to be replaced and so forth, right? I mean, there's no such requirement with this development, right?
They, they may well have that because they have to, they have to do periodic maintenance of the detention basins and who knows how they'll set it up, but.
They'll have to be in their fee.
Yeah, there, there would be a, a base fee for, uh, there's very little maintenance. It's simply a pipeline. All the maintenance and operation are on the lots, but the pipeline itself, put in a certain amount of money and let that just sit in an escrow account or that work and have a sewer pump contractor, contract with the homeowners association run annual inspection and, or.
Uh, just assuming that they have the association stays together and does what they're supposed to and if they have an emergency, they can have a, it'll get, get it taken care of right away, right? So turn it into a health issue because I, just because they have a homeowners association. I know several people that li, have homeowners associations and they really don't do anything.
That's probably true, but when you have a sewer pump or something like that, it's a little bit different. Stations or treatment plants on sites now, there's the, that ability in the state to do that.
I just want to make sure because it's good, good, you know, it's good to say that's going to be done and it has to be done, but making sure it's all taken care of is another issue.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think as, you know, as we start to look at, you know, subdividing into these types of properties and these qualities of properties, it has to be right. So thinking that it probably will work or we need to, you know, we need to know that it to the best of all ability and research, it, it will work and it's set up to work and not go, not go with any kind of conjecture. So it just, it deserves just another look at all the pluses and minuses of the, the two schemes kind of proposed, the original scheme and the new scheme to make sure we're confident about one or the other that, and, and how it will operate into the future with, without involvement or cost from the town.
Then i- i- if for some reason the system doesn't work and DPW has to come in and do something on emergency, it should be up to their standards at least. I mean, what they, what they want or need.
Of course.
I mean, I, I mean, I mean, I'm more, I, I'm more app, like, I, I think we need to, I think we need to, to talk to DPW. I think there's an easement issue if it, if it becomes town infrastructure where there's an easement problem there. I mean, to me, you know, the additional lot is, you know, gi- given the ask, like, I, to me, I'd rather see 11A just be open space and woods than an additional building. It's already a really tough site. There's all kinds of management with stormwater. There's wetlands. I mean, it, there's a ton going on here. So, you know, it, like, I, I think there's a number of issues to work through here and, you know, I, I definitely want to hear from, from GPW to see how this could get worked through.
At this point, uh, Preston, obviously.
Yeah, I, I think being a public hearing, I think we should open it up for public comment. And I think we should start, I'll turn it over to Peter, uh, because we received some emails. If you could, um, uh, read those emails.
Yep. Vito, can you just stop your screen share, please?
Sure. There we go.
Thank you. So. So the first email I'll read, Doug Small from the GPW. Email me late today at 3:14, says, hi, Peter. If a 30-foot easement is required by the town or for the town, why isn't a 30-foot easement required for a public easement? Question mark. It should be equal or greater in my opinion. Also, is GCG reviewing the pump station capacity for this project? Doug. Uh, GCG is our third-party engineer and they will be having to review and they are reviewing, uh, this project as we speak today. And then I am grabbing the other email. I do want to note, uh, for all planning board members, the, there was a comment from Vivian Williams that was, uh, received by the planning board and sent out to, uh, the board along with, uh, the applicant's engineer, Mr. Carner's Vito. Uh, I also did get an email today at 6:49, uh, from Mara Wheeler. Says, we are, Mara, excuse me, Mara is a resident of 62 Whittamore Drive, Asheville, Mass. Her email reads, we are objecting to the modification to Whittamore Estates being planned, plan being requested. The house lot on road we do not agree with, period. So those are the two comments I've received, chairman. And so at this point, I would ask you to open it up to members of the public that would like to speak.
One more person in the waiting room. If anybody from the public has comments on this at this time, uh, now's the time to speak up.
Hi, my name is Vivian Williams. I just wanted to introduce myself. I wanted to speak on behalf of the Whittamore Drive HOA, all of whom, the members are present tonight on this phone call. Um, so it's myself at 34 and all those frontage lots. What we wanted to just ask you to consider is that any changes or modifications to this development should not affect the stormwater operations and management plan and long-term pollution prevention plan, which was established in 2014. That is what we uphold as an HOA. We have recorded this comment on record at the Conservation Commission meeting Monday. And we've also reached out to the development company and its representative privately to establish communication about this. Um, the, our main concern, you know, as you guys have already stated, this is a very tricky, wet area. The detention basins, the infiltration basins that we're being asked to uphold. It's a big, it's a big situation and any changes that are going to be made, we just want to make sure that it's not going to affect basically signed up holding and that, you know, we are protected in what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, my understanding is those would be mostly technical uh, analysis issues and GCG would be looking at that sort of thing in the review, or am I missing something?
Correct, yeah. GCG, our third-party engineer, we're, are, you know, is reviewing the storm, you know, the third-party, as a third, you know, it's a third-party engineer group is reviewing the stormwater for the process. The six house lots or A and R lots or, or frontage lots along Whittamore Drive are part of the stormwater maintenance and pollution prevention plan, uh, along with the lots that would be built within this subdivision.
Yep, Peter, I think we've.
Uh, per se, and then.
We lost you for a second, Peter.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think my internet connection is unstable. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good now.
So just to stay. So just to stay, again, the, the house lots, the six house lots that are on the front, the frontage lots of Whittemore Drive. They're already part of the homeowners association for the stormwater. The, the lots that are included within this proposed Whittemore Drive subdivision would also be blended together to combine a lot, you know, one whole homeowners association. At this point, the developer of A and J Investments right now controls the stormwater and maintenance prevention plan because he has not turned over ownership to the homeowners association. And so that will all have to be taken care of and at the time of the transfer, obviously, they would have to be receiving a stormwater maintenance system that has been maintained throughout the years that is, I would say that is up to, up to snuff and is acceptable for the HOA. The second homeowners association was being proposed would be to kind of be developed to maintain the private sewer within. And so the six house lots out front would not be part of a sewer, a proposed sewer HOA. Because therefore they would not be connected to that sewer system.
Can I ask if, if the same Vito, is, was, you, were you the engineer on the first part of this project that, with the houses along Whittemore Drive?
Yes, I was.
You were. So are the calculations you're doing for wetlands, I assume with part two take into considerations the calculations you already did in developing part one?
Yeah, we used the same model from part one as, as for this one. We just kind of modified it a little bit. And all the stormwater infrastructure is the same. There's no new components that we had to add for this. You know, it's still the same. So the maintenance, overall maintenance and the cost would be the same as it previously was. You know, we didn't have to add a second, a third detention basin or anything like that.
I think, I remember when we had discussed this previously, that's still my first year here, so I'm not just quite sure of the order. But there were some questions from the Whittemore Drive residents that may have been having a problem with drainage at that time and are, those were, I believe, going to be addressed and corrected as stage two went into effect?
That is correct, Trish.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm trying to remember what the issues were.
There was a question about drainage going out onto Whittemore Drive. On the frontage lots, it's gonna now come down onto a property in the road in the swale.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, that's right.
It wasn't completed.
Yeah, it was, it, so now the road would pick up that portion of drainage. That's right.
So it's really about part one and part two really working together as a complete picture to control all the stormwater in the area.
Yep. Yeah.
And then the other component that we thought about, which you guys were just speaking about, is that, you know, if there were an issue with the sewer and it affected the infiltration basins, the detention basins, how would we sort of handle that? Given the two HOAs and what have you?
It would be, I guess, similar to say if, you know, you had a septic system that failed and breached out and went to the detention basin. You know, I'm not exactly sure how, you know, which one would take care of it. Obviously, the sewer would have to get fixed under that homeowners association. But I'm not sure on the, you know, if there were cleanup required, say, is that what you're trying to say is if this cleanup required into the basin? Yeah, we'd have to look into that. I'm not exactly sure which one would be responsible, you know, for that cleanup process. We'll have to, we can take the question. We'll get an answer for you though for the next meeting.
Thank you.
So Preston, I think at this point, I think it makes sense if every, if that's the only comment from the public would be to continue this to a further date.
All right, our first meeting in July would normally, would be July ninth. Are we, will you be ready for July ninth? Is that good?
For, as I'm concerned, I'm sure Vito has the way in.
No, that's fine. And if there's something comes up, we can always, you know, extend it ahead of time, but that should be okay.
Okay, is there a motion to continue this public hearing to July ninth at, do we have anything else on that yet, Peter? Should we do seven fifteen? Seven fifteen.
I'll move.
Oh, second?
Okay, that was moved by Dale and seconded by Tricia. Let's have a roll call vote.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
And Preston Crowe, aye. That passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Phil's here, it looks like.
It is now eight fifteen. Ah, Phil, welcome. Let's see. Sorry, I'm a little closing out some stuff on my desktop about Whittemore so I can see what's next. Ah, yes, eighty-one West Union. We now have a continued public hearing and public discussion on a special permit and amended site plan review for phase two of their project. And if the applicant is ready to present where, anything that's new or where things stand tonight, I will turn it over to you.
Preston, before you do that, I just kind of want to step in and talk a little bit about the dust control out on that site.
Oh, thank you.
After the last planning board meeting, it came up as a major concern of the board that, that the owner of the site and the applicant in this case controlled the dust that's coming off the site. And I, and I will have to say over the past two weeks, Mr. Rodenheiser has been very proactive. And I've had two meetings with him out on site and he's had, he's checked in with me and I've received emails and texts letting me know that he has watered the site. And so things are moving forward in a, in a better direction regarding the dust. Moving forward, I don't know if Phil's on this call and he would like to speak. However, Bill and I on Wednesday had a meeting out in the field with the neighbors, Mr. and Mrs. Tom and Sandy Ferris to go over what Bill would like to do. And so in that front section of the site, Bill has actually put some loom down and he plants the hydro seed. Hopefully to get grass to grow to kind of hold some of that dirt and that dirt onto that site. And so he does plan to do that and to maintain and to kind of move some dirt around to allow him to, to, to to loom and then to hydro seed. So I, I do have to say after the last board meeting, you know, I, I have worked with Bill and, and Bill has been fairly responsive. And I believe it lived up to the expectations. Regarding the storage facility, this past week, they actually did plant trees on the site. And I have been in the communication with them. They, the orders are actually from Utah and one of the owner's representatives fly out to Athens, to, to take a look at the site and to meet with me, hopefully, and to come and get together, create a punch list of all remaining items. And so things are starting to, you know, move in the right direction, I would say, regarding the landscaping on phase one. Which is kind of back up and running. Also, pave, final paving is scheduled for the weekend after Father's Day, which I believe is the twenty-fifth. So I have been working with Bill over the last few days regarding finishing up phase one and also kind of maintaining and controlling the dust on, which is coming off of phase two at this point. So with that said, I would therefore then hand it over to the applicant and the representative, Mr. Barber.
I just have one question on, on this, on that dust. Thanks for the update, Peter. It sounds like a good update. Is the equipment that, that's been used to manage the dust, the watering equipment is, is that equipment that's gonna remain on site for the, for the foreseeable period of time? Part of the year where the dust needs to be, and if the applicant needs to answer that, I'm happy for that, but just, just the expect, I mean, I'm, I'm glad that we've addressed it in these last fourteen days since the last meeting, but I I just want to make sure that that management will continue for all foreseeable time where dust needs to be managed and until, you know, this, this site is completed at some point.
Little bit about that, we want to thank Peter and the town because now there is a supply of water there with the meter. So now we have that cast capability going forward to continue with, with the watering.
Yeah, hi, guys. Thanks, Pete, for meeting. And yes, Joe, to answer your question, the, the equipment will stay on site. The fire hoses and we did order some additional stuff. There was, some of it was out of stock. So waiting for the water cannons to come in. But as Pete said, we did roam the whole right side, which if this is approved, will eventually be a parking lot. But it will be a while, so I figured why not put grass there? We weed whacked and cleaned all along the fence where the trees are. And we plan to go back out there this weekend to continue to prep that areas and Monday next week, it's gonna be hydro seeded on the right side. But the water equipment will stay there.
Thank, thank you, guys.
So we set then? All right, since the last time we had the meeting, we took from the meeting kind of concerns in the nature of the building. We'll talk about that. We did also receive your peer consultancy report. And Bart has prepared a response to that and filed it, I think, today with revised sets of plans. A lot of the peer review comments were what I call engineering in the nature of, you know, location of this catch basin. Location on the plant of test pits and those type of things. The consultant did make a comment from the viewpoint of suggesting the use of nine foot wide rather than ten foot wide parking spaces. So we have done that and that frees up a little more area in nature of smaller areas of grass, you know, one foot strips and so on. The engineer also had a question from the viewpoint of the location of the loading dock for the, for the new building. And that was relocated to address the concerns that he had. As I said, the rest of the comments were more engineering in nature in, in details that Bart has worked through and provided a response for. So from the viewpoint of the, the site plan, there weren't, again, with the exception of the relocation of, of the loading area for the new building. And the nine foot spaces, that's pretty much it. We had talked about the three tandem spaces behind the building and those, those have been done as well. Other than that, the plans are essentially as they were. There was a question from the fire department and the layout of the interior of the site that had that original fire truck turning radius has not changed from day one. And these buildings don't impact that. So that's the nature of the site plan, the nature of the building. You know, after the last meeting, we worked with the architect to get plans done and, and those who were emailed to you folks today. It was a difficult time and everything that's going on, getting all that done, but that has been done. So the plans today have, as we talked about, the man side with then pretty much the flat roof on top of that. There was a change to the, the band area that we talked about for the signage was increased. And that overhang allows us to have recessed lighting for that sign so that you won't see any lighting fixtures. The other piece from the viewpoint of the, the dormers, the architect worked out the details for structural support on that. So you can see when you look at the second floor sheet on that, under each window on the dormer, you'll see the structural element for support for that. But those plans are stamped by the, by the architect. Those are the plans that we've got from the viewpoint of color, the main color of, of the new building is a host stone with the primary, the, the secondary color being suede and what we did was we took suede to be the primary color of the second building. So there's a little bit of matching or consistency, as you know, that building has the same answered roof and the same flat thing that we did with the other building. So a period to the nature of a little bit of consistency in color, but true consistency in the nature of the roof style. So kind of that's, that's where we are. There were no significant changes beyond those items. The height of the building that we talked about with that change in that, that sign banner area where at thirty-four ten, so we've kept it under the thirty-five feet that we had agreed to from the last meeting. So I don't know if you want to pull up the, the site plan, we can again, show you the changes that go along with that and we can go through the, the building as well, but essentially that's it. So if you blow that up. And then, yeah. That's actually the old plan. Can you, can we get?
It's dated June eighth.
Can I share and pull on mine?
Yeah, and, and Peter, just to know, I wasn't able, I wasn't able to, to see the new renderings. And, and so I'd have not circulated those to the board members. And, and so at this point, these are all new documents for the record. And so it was just, it was too late in the day and I already had to take care of some other personal issues.
The latest plans on the town website, the file says something about June eighth and June second, but the dates on the plans say May twenty-sixth. And is that?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a newer one than is on the town website.
Right. This takes the peer consulting review comment letter and addresses the comment on, in that letter. As I said, there's a number of catch bases, a number of test pits, some issues. If you want, Bart can go specifically into those, but from the viewpoint of the, the big picture, this is the relocated loading area. These are the three tandem spaces we talked about. Other than that, and, and other than the, the widths of the spaces, that's, that's the only change in the nature of the site plan.
Are the tandem spaces assigned to the same owner?
I'm sorry?
Is each pair of tandem spaces allocated to the same owner? How, how is that supposed to work?
Yes, they would be. Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to see other sheets on that. Or we can go to the.
I think we want to look at the architecture on the buildings.
Yep, this is building three. Again, the roof structure we talked about, other than that, there's no change. Again, this is the, the suede, which is the, this color here. The part, the secondary color for the main building. Do you have your one through building one plans? That you can pull up?
Emma has them. I think Emma has them.
Emma, do you have the plans from this afternoon to the building one?
Yes.
Can you pull that up?
Yeah.
All right, so if you want to blow up on the left-hand side, that tells you that the, the changes we made. So as I said, we created that, that science off it and we put the, the lighting under that.
Can you scroll up, Emma?
The man said total height is the thirty-four ten. And you can see under, on the second floor, as I talked about, the structural elements under each of the dormer windows. The architect has included those for the structural support of, of the dormers. As, as a requirement structurally. Well, this is the color we're proposing. Again, primary color is host stone, secondary color is suede. I mean, and that's really the key changes with the front of the building. The other sides of the buildings didn't, didn't have any change, right?
The right side.
The right side where the residential had something, if you want to pull that up. The right side where the residential had something, if you want to pull that up. You want to explain the changes on that side, John?
This is John Word from Rotten Heiser Builders. We added the same architectural details underneath the dormers, uh, that we did on the front. Uh, and later on you'll see the architectural's, uh, details drawn by the architect with the specific elements.
The details are, I think, on the last page. Yep, yep. So those are from the architect. They add a little architectural feature to those support, supports for the dormer.
You may have to zoom in, but he, he lists the actual bygone products and, uh, all the trim details.
Are, are those, are those structurally necessary or, or is that just for architectural purposes?
They're architectural, they're not structural.
Oh.
I think we were trying to be sensitive to some of the comments about adding more detail, um, to make it more mansard.
Uh, and I think there was also concern that with the, the roof kind of overhanging there, it was a little unusual.
Right.
If I remember the comments correctly.
You got some breakup from that roof overhang.
Even though it's not needed for structure, it does add structural balance to the design. And it, the, the.
What, what's?
And the cornice detail helps break down the, the thirty inch of overhang of the mansard. Uh, so that helps, uh, fill that space with them more details. And that goes all the way around the building, not just the front.
Yeah, I'm, I'm afraid, uh. I'm, I'm afraid you can, I, I feel like th- this went a little bit in the wrong direction and we can. We can, we can talk about that more later, but, um, it's a, it's a very odd detail, uh, for a mansard roof. And the, the thing I had talked about, that the window just isn't typically hanging out there in the eve space. That it's, it's usually aligned with the wall, which is the easy solution to just push the window back. So it's aligned with the wall and put in some kind of pan over your eve. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure where your. I, I'm not sure where your architect found this kind of, uh, example of a window like, like this. Um, I, I'm not sure it adds to your facade. So.
So one of the, Trish, can I just address your comment?
Yeah.
One of the difficulties we have is obviously losing a building and trying to just make sure everything. You know, trying to be sensitive to the neighbors and trying to make this work out. We're also, you know, just considering budget. And one of the major constraints is pushing in, in the steel structure that we're using in order to push those windows back. It makes it almost impossible to use the steel in the man, in the manner that we'd like to use. And we drive costs like literally through the roof. So that is one of the considerations for how it was designed. And I think we were understanding from your comments and trying to be sensitive to them was adding some detail and some, um, some features consistent with mansard, um, which is what we talked to the architect about. And, um, he did actually feel very comfortable with this. And to your comment about the signs, we adjusted that. And actually we liked that a lot more, getting the signs and then able to also not be worried about how the lighting is going to work too, right? Cause we've got it down in the soffit.
Can you pull up the, uh, elevation again, the front elevation?
Emma, can you send this document to us, please? So we can flip through this concurrently with the convo here. Yeah. I mean, I, 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 I appreciate you guys trying to be responsive to, to the comments. Um, but I, I, I agree, and this view that we're seeing on the screen right now. Um, I, it just, it, I, I like honestly, like my reaction is it'd be better without those there. Um, you know, on most mansards that I've seen, and I'm not an architect and I'm not an expert, like that kind of treatment is more consistent across the entire building. Um, so like, I'm just reacting to what I'm seeing. I do appreciate you guys trying to be, be responsive to the comments. I, I just, I'm not sure that that's additive. Uh, I might, I think it looks, you know, it might look cleaner without it there on that, on that particular view, just a reaction.
My, my reaction is similar. Um, but I, I do like how the, uh, the wider windows on the top floor. Uh, the crest of that doesn't poke out above the top of the roof anymore. It looks like it's, it's actually more part of the building as opposed to a facade. Uh, and I, I think the first floor with the change in how you do the signs. Um, I think you really, I, I think you nailed it there. Uh, I think that's exactly what we were asking for last time. And so I think that's right. Uh, I understand there's internal, uh, architectural i- engineering issues, I should say, with the steel. And, um, I, I, I tend to agree that the, the added architectural features are more make it stand out that there's something weird here than correct that there's something weird here. So I think it, I think it actually may be better visually without it. But I'm, I'm not an expert on aesthetics.
It's, it's just a, um, I, I'm trying to register the, the solution and the explanation because the, the reason, you know, dormers are typically, not, not always, but typically, and maybe especially typically with mansard roofs. Dormers are usually set over the exterior walls that the loads just go right down the wall. And they do that because it's the simplest, cheapest, easiest solution. So I, I'm just not sure. I don't know where this is. I, I can't get my head around what the problem is here and why it's making the structural steel box harder when it should be aligning all your loads and make it easier. Um, I, I'm, I'm not quite getting it. And I don't know if you have structural drawings here to, to kind of, to show that, you know, and, and frankly, it's not, that's way beyond our purview going into the structural drawings. Um, but, but I'm trying to get my head around your argument and what you're having, what you're struggling with. When, yeah, when the simple, when the simpler solution isn't being pursued. So, um, and the more typical, the, the obvious, more typical solution. Um, so it, it's a little confusing for me. I do think that, like, I think the porch is looking better with the, you know, with the, with the signs in the right place. It's just looking a lot cleaner. It's looking a lot more friendly. And, um, and I appreciate all, all those things. It, it, it is a process and it's a typical, this is the typical process of finding your way through. And, you know, kind of seeing that, you, you know, what it takes to, to get to that final solution. But every, every time there's, there's, there's real progress. So I, I do appreciate that. So I also appreciate how difficult it is. It's just that I can't, I don't think as a planning board, we can't settle for something that's still not quite right. But closer and closer.
I can give some insight into, uh, what we're trying to accomplish. So for the structural of the building, uh, to have a superstructure that's easier to build in the, with the, with the steel. The mansard needs to be outside the wall of the building. And instead of burying, uh, the dormers back all the way into the mansard. And they kind of disappear and you'd have to have some type of other secondary roof that goes back. Trying to keep with the traditional mansard look of how the, a dormer would sit on a mansard. That is why we did what we did. So from the appearance from the front, that is why the dormers are the way they are. If we tried to, and so we tried pushing back the, uh, mansard and the dormers. And to, um, carry the height required for the third floor. We would have had to push the support wall of the roof back four feet into the building. And then, uh, on the right side, so we would have, and then that would have been on all sides of the building. And then that would have tran- changed the load of the roof where it would have to be supported. And when we just did those trust details to the steel manufacturer, he was like, we're not going to do that. We can't do that. Uh, so then what that would mean is on the residential side, we would have lost a lot of floor space that would really done detriment to the floor plans of, of those, uh, residential's. So being that this building is really only seen from the front and looking at it from the front. It has the appearance of a real mansard and the gambrels are at, on, are there added by the architect to help adds because of the length of the building to add another detail to it. I know that a lot of this is subjective, but we are designing a building that is trying to meet, uh, a lot of different needs. And being that we're not seeing it from all the other sides, you, we think that we've have it in a true, uh, depiction of a mansard roof.
And then one other thing, um, to, uh, trust your point is that I think what's, what's been, what's a little bit of a struggle for us is we were trying to go from what was the storage building, right? This, the, the big box. And then from way back in the beginning, it's like, how do we transition from that sort of then into what is then residential along the street? And we conceded the point of the building is closest to the lot line, limited those, limited those and moved back. So this, this building is so much more dramatic and so much more than what's the storage. I don't know where, where it turns into be the transition, you know? And that's one of the struggles. Cause now it's like so different from the storage, right? The storage is the big box. Then there's this, and I think we're kind of going, I thought we're going in the right direction. With what you were kind of asking for in terms of some sort of a transition. And I hope you understand what John said about, you know, answering your question about you, how does, why is it such a struggle? For what we're trying to accomplish on the mansard.
One of the things we had the architect look at was, was the, the architect you folks approved for twelve Pond Street. Uh, which is consistent with, with what we've got. The windows are outside of, of the mansard roof. Um, so this is consistent with the other elevation. That building is actually, I think, ten or fifteen feet longer in length, uh, than ours is. And, uh, I have a picture of that if you want me to, to show it.
I'll throw in my two cents if anyone wants to hear it.
Sure. Go ahead, Dale.
I personally, I think we're getting really into nitpicking a lot of stuff that is subjective. Because one person might look at this and think it's perfect and beautiful. And because we're on the board, so it's, it, I don't think that we have to make it so that the, it's everything the board wants. I think it just has to be, you know what I mean? I, I don't know if you understand what I'm saying, but I, I think we're getting like really nitpicky on stuff. When it's from, you ask ten different people, you're going to get ten different opinions on whether it looks right or wrong or, or yes or no. I think it, to me, it looks great. And it, and with those, those little boxes underneath, it's a little bit different, but you know, uh, it's not something that like you have to go on and on about trying to. I, I, I just don't think you're ever going to get the perfect building with everybody's different opinions that meets everybody's idea of the perfect building. I think it just overall has to look really nice and work and, and not look ugly. And when they're done, it needs to look like this. Cause you know what's going on with other projects. It needs to actually look like this cause. But anyway, I, I think it, it looks fine to me. There's a few little things. There's always a few things that could be different. But like you said, you're looking, it's away from the road. You're looking at it straight on. There's a big square box building right next to it. To try to zero in and spend a lot of time trying to get every little detail perfect, I don't think it's ever going to happen.
I think, um, I, I actually have the Pond Street drawings open right now. So I'm kind of looking at them. I can see what you're saying. Like I, I see your point. And so, and I see, um, what you are saying about the structural steel, assuming that your structure is looking a lot like, like this structure since they're similar, you know, in, in roof. So, um, so I, I guess it's just looking at, I, I think if, if they're, like I said, if they're only decorative, that's not the decoration I don't think you want. I, I, I think it's taking, it's actually, um, I, I think you want to take them back off. And I think my point there on was that the overhang on this roof is so deep. And I understand, I think now why you're making it so deep to get the extra living space above, I think, um, not seeing that in sections. So I can't, I understand what you're trying to do. So I would take the non-structural decorative elements back off. I don't think they're helping you. It's not, it's not in the right direction. Um, but I would keep in mind, how do you, if you have that big of an overhang, if you need that big of an overhang for the space, then how do you maybe add just the, the brackets a lot? I mean, it's, I think it's simpler maybe than, than what it's showing here to give that detail to that big overhang without adding something that is really, um, really atypical of a gambrel roof. It's, it's finding that, it's finding that balance in things. So.
And to, to my point, just what you said, Trish, I don't, I'm, I'm not, not saying positive, you know, against or not, but you just said to them that you don't think this is what they want, but they drew it in. So they must've wanted it. I mean, that, that, you know what I mean? Like everyone's got a different opinion. If they didn't want it, I don't know why they would have drawn it in.
Because it, but like, cause I think they're trying, they were trying to, I think they were trying to respond to my comments last time about how to approach these, about how these are done, about looking at examples to see how a mansard roof is done. I think they're trying to respond to my comments. Um, and, and they wouldn't have pursued it if not for what I had said. So that's why I'm responding to this, to try to make it a little more clear and simplify it, simplify it for construction, simplify it visually. So, um.
We should ask them if they, or they just want to take them out.
Well, no, I mean, we.
Because I, I, I'm, my point is, that was exactly my point that we keep going back and forth on. I think this and that. I, I think they put them in because they saw something and they thought that would look good in there.
Well, we were really trying to.
That maybe it does. I, I.
We were trying to address, uh, Dale, I appreciate your comments, but we were really trying to address the, you know, Trish's, Trish's concerns. I guess we didn't, you know, we didn't hit the mark, but if it comes, turns out that adding just corbels is the answer, then you know, we, we would do that.
Yeah. But my, and my point is that you guys, it's your building.
Yep.
But you need to have some say in what's going on here. And if you like it like this, then you should say, you know, we know, we like it. Like this and convince us or if the corbeau is okay, or if you're okay taking them out. But I just think it's, it seems like we're going on and on about all these little details that to me doesn't really change the building that much. I'm not a professional architect. So, but I just look at it and I say, that looks nice. I mean, so I'm just talking to, you know, the, the developer that, you know, if you really want those things, then you should say, well, we put them in because we really want them. And if there, if it's like take it or leave it, then maybe you just take them out. Say we'll take them out and we kind of just move on.
I, I'm a sim- similar place to Dale. I, I think we've, I, I think we've reached peak building here. Uh, the, the, whether or not th- those architectural features stay or not. Um, I think most of us would rather see them, um, at least toned down. Um, I don't know that we need to. I don't know that we need to keep going back and forth on that. We could even theoretically, you know, put in a condition that you know, the planning board will review the final architectural features underneath the the dorm windows not to be unreasonably withheld.
Because I like it. It's much better with the roof like Trish was saying, it goes all the way to the top of the dormer, so it doesn't look like a Lowe's or something where they have a fake building sticking up. I like the where the signs are, the porch, everything looks, it looks really nice to me. And I don't, you know, we could go on and on and maybe we could get it even better, but it may turn out we're just going in circles. And it could end up worse. I I I don't know how much we need to put into trying to get exactly the perfect exact building. And I think that the developer needs to have a amount of say in like, this is what we're proposing because we like it and this is our building we want to build. And then if there's something really radical, we can, we can, we can mention it and then but.
I just, I just want to say, Dale, that it's the difference between this process and Alden Street. Where basically when Alden Street was presented, there were almost no questions about the design of the building. Because the right people were on the team from the beginning to work through all these questions. So the reason this process has been so long and gone through so many phases is that the the right per people for this large scale project weren't on the team. And so it's going to extremely lengthen our process. With Alden Street, it sailed right through, right?
But but my.
So that's, so that's, that's why this is happening. That's why this is happening.
I feel like we're trying to design the building.
I do too, and I shouldn't be.
We should do that.
Right, I shouldn't be. It should just be a no. It should just be, I'm not voting for it.
But this is.
But I'm trying not to do that.
And and we're nitpicking all these little details and I don't think it it that we should be doing that. That's that's all. I I don't think we need to redesign this. Like I said, the the things underneath, it's fine with or without. They changed the roof. It looks way better than it did last week. And take it or leave it with the the little doohickeys underneath the windows. I I don't think that makes or breaks the building. That's all.
Yeah, I I might have a different attitude if this were, you know, downtown where everybody's driving by it all the time. As opposed to, you know, hundred feet back on the lot.
But even then, I mean, as as long as it's not just a weird, you know, I'm just the average guy and I don't think there's anything that stands out that like this is a bad architectural design. I I think it looks fine.
Joe or Phil, do you have any architectural comments?
I have an architectural comment. I think I'm kind of, you know, I can empathize with both sides of the argument that Dale and Trish are on and I'm going to lean a little more towards Dale's side at this point, just because I feel like we keep doing this and Trisha is saying she doesn't want to design the the place, but I I think that, I think that the applicants have been very receptive to her suggestions. So that if there are things holding it back or these are are what we have to see that, I mean, they they've shown enough good faith, at least the last couple of efforts that like if we're going in that direction, like I know you don't want to design it for them, but that's ultimately just waiting for them to tell you to come up with the one that you like is the same thing as designing it at that point to me. So.
Let them all finish.
So I would, I I see both sides of the argument and they're both valid, but I I just I wish we could just make it more efficient to be like, okay, this is what we're missing and and you got to get there. Like if they need a boost, then I I mean, if this is what we're trying to glean for ourselves and what we want to get, then let's just give them the nudge they need.
I think the thing is that next time, I mean, I I think this could be okay if they take off the things that they put on and that we have something in the conditions like we had for Pond Street, which is why I have the Pond Street drawings in front of me. That the details of the building have to be submitted for approval. Because we couldn't see them on 12 Pond Street either. It was a diagram. And we wanted to see them for real, right? So I think that could be fine. I think in the future, the thing is that when this project, whenever it was months and months ago, first came to us in its first form, the right response would have been, this is not up to the quality of the Ashland Planning Board. Go back and get it up to these standards of these drawings. Then we'll be ready to look at it for you. Until then, it's a waste of our time. That's where I think where things should go in the future. And that's why we're here. All right, because the homework wasn't done ahead of time. So I'm happy taking the flak for that. I think that's, I think that's partly my job here is to say that this isn't good enough for Ashland. All right, so in the future, that first meeting, I think, would not have happened. It would just been, no, go back to the drawing board and come back when you're actually showing us a building.
But we're, we've only been working on this a couple of times because this is a new building. This this didn't go all the way back to the beginning. This has only been a couple and they, it was pretty close to this at the beginning.
What Dale, what I I completely, with all due respect, I I, you know, I I don't think that's a fair, accurate statement at all.
But let's, let's not go over the history of this. Let's just stay where we are tonight.
But to kind of lay out on this, I I mean, I like, I I agree with Tricia, like this has been an iterative process. Because where we were at the very beginning on this phase was very far from where we needed to be. The effort and the work that's gone into the many, many meetings we've had here has been to bring this project in line with what's around it, consider it to the neighbors, consider it to to the Ferris's, consider it to the fact that it's in front of the middle school. Like this, it's been this long because this is what it has taken to get this to a place where it it's in line with where it is and it's in the spirit of what the development was trying to be. And and admittedly, this was something that was I've done a long time ago and we're, you know, literally over ten years ago, right? Where where this this was set in motion. And so like the the reason it's gone on and on is because of the the effort it's taken to kind of iteratively move our our way there. I agree, like we're, we're not here to design buildings. But at some level, because of how this process has gone on, like it feels that way, right? But that's not because anybody here wants to micromanage or be the, I I I really, I don't think that's why any of us are here. So like, I I I have Trish's, I I I'm I'm aligned with Tricia in terms of, in terms of that perspective on this project. All that said, as I have, this this project has come light years forward. I do think it is. It it is, it does look pretty good. I am in the camp that says, I I personally think that the architectural additives would be better being removed. And 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 I do believe that that the applicant put those on there based on Trish's commentary about mansard roofs and about detail. So I I I don't think that I don't think that Mr. Ronheiser put that on there because he wanted to, because if he had wanted to, he probably would have done it a while ago. So like I'm of the mind that that, you know, I'm of the mind that, you know, without those, but I think this, this this is pretty, you you know, where it needs to be at this point. So.
And just one quick point, I don't want to correct one thing, Joe, that you said. You said that we're trying to fit it in with the neighborhood and so the neighbors are happy with it. But last, if you remember last meeting, Mr. Bond came on and said about building three, that he preferred the heavier roof and the different colors. And we said, no, we're going to make it a flat roof. We wanted a flat roof matching building. We're not necessarily taking the neighbor's sake into consideration.
I I that's not intended to be a mathematical precise statement.
I know that, I know that, but I just last week, Mr. Bond did say that. He said, we asked him about building three. What do you prefer? And he said, he I preferred the heavier roof and he preferred the different color building.
Yeah, but I think, I think the board's assessment is that the height of the 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 their other traditional roof was.
Okay, but I'm just saying, that's that's a neighbor. That's an butter giving his opinion and we're going the opposite of that. So
Okay.
Not always exactly. It's sometimes this is what we want, but.
If I can, I mean, we certainly come a long way and I don't want to get into what should have been done from day one and and what was understood or not understood from the viewpoint of what the town wanted. But certainly our obligation to submit a plan and then go through the process. And that process requires re-design review, which we did. We addressed their comments. We've been addressing your comments all along the whole process. We think we've done that at this stage of the game. We think this building, which again, bear in mind, it's a hundred and twenty feet back from the road. And when you're going to see it is when you're in the gap between the storage building and the Ferris building looking immediately to your right. You know, can we tweak a little more things? Yeah, I mean, but I think we've had the architecture, you know, ninety-nine percent of what we can bring it. I mean, the building from the viewpoint of how it is, is is what it is and tweaks from the viewpoint of elements and everything else, we can continue to work on those things, but you know, we've now had this architectural discussion, I think, for four times. You know, we have had the architect involved on things in a period of time. And this, you've got the stamp plan today. This is what he believes would be appropriate for this building. This is what he saw in the nature of of the Pond Street building that you approved, which had windows which were not set back into the mansard that had a four foot overhang. So there's nothing inconsistent with what he ultimately came up with from the viewpoint of what we put on this plan. You know, I'm sorry to say we're in in through no fault. I think everybody has tried to work cooperatively with with good faith. But, you know, we're down to this issue. I haven't heard any issues in the nature of the site plan, although, you know, opening up to have those. But we're running out of time given your town election stuff.
And don't get me wrong, I take it or leave it on those little details under there. I think either way, it's fine. I I I just, I was just, my point was if they they wanted that on their building, I'm okay with it. That was my point. If that's what they wanted, if they were doing it just to try to please us and they don't care if it comes or go, then we take them off if it looks better. But I just, I just was making the point that I think we get a little bit too nitpicky.
Or if there's a specific element that you want that we can do and you want to make that as a condition that we investigate this element, we we have no problem with that.
No, that's, I'm just saying, that's where I see. I think that overall it looks great with or without those little details. Everything else about it, I think, looks fine. To me, that's where I'm at.
Okay, let's move over to away from the architecture for a minute and look at the the rest of the site plan. Peter, you said we had review from GCG.
Ah, yeah, the board did, and I did send that out the other day. The biggest com- comment was concerning the to trap the the parking lot in the front, we're building one for SAT. They noted that there was an issue regarding, or they kind of highlighted that the exit drive was a little bit close to West Union Street. And so I believe they did move that. And then I would probably let Bart, who's on the call, Lefinsky, answer those questions. But GCG did have some comments and 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 I believe Bart made those changes. Peter, would you like to have Bart go through those changes?
Yeah, I I can go through those. Like you said, Peter, the the one of the main ones was that front parking lot. GCG recommended removing the entrance closest to West Union. But that is an entrance only. It's not an exit. We won't have cars exiting that close to West Union. So that's basically an entrance to get into the parking lot. The other thing that we changed with that one is this, the eight stalls in that front parking lot, we.
Bart, do you mind just sharing your screen so everybody can see what what you know?
I'm on a I'm on two different computers.
Pull up my
Okay.
Plan again.
I Peter, you're a co-host, so you can pull up your screen. Just for the public, just for the, to allow the public to see part. Thank you.
Hang on. So the comment from the peer consultant was this driveway here. That's a one way in. You can see the arrows on the pavement. So there's nobody exiting there, so you won't have that conflict. Very easy. People will come in and make that turn. They exit this way. So we don't feel there's no, no changes have to be made to that location.
We we did on those eight stalls in that front parking lot, we did reduce the stall width to nine feet from ten. And that was in order.
That's one thing that was done. We haven't fully investigated that without traffic guy. So this plan shows nine feet. But we need to talk to our traffic guy from the viewpoint of the nature of the uses on this site and the turning radius from the viewpoint of those loading areas for both buildings. And then the vans and everything else. So this plan depicts nine feet. We may go back to the ten feet simply for the for the, at least the back building and behind building one A. The the other, the other spaces may stay at nine. So we'll get to, we'll we'll answer that within the next day or so. But it was your consultant's recommendation to look at nine, nine foot spaces. So these we can look at, but kind of the rest of them and around back may be better off at ten.
The 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 eight in the front are the only ones that we reduced to nine. Everywhere else, they're still at a ten foot width.
I'm sorry?
The eight in the front parking lot, we reduced to nine foot. Everything else is still at a ten foot width parking stall. The comment on the front parking lot was in order to close that intersection that was closest to building one A by adding a bigger island at the end.
Right. Do you have to have that entrance only or could it be in and out only from the far end so that you don't have that traffic there?
Well, we we narrowed that entrance down. It's only eighteen feet entry road. So we we deliberately narrowed that down so that we would allow cars to come in off the West Union Street. And then if they were to leave, they would loop around. And you know, if there's a a traffic queue, then they would get online to to make the entrance back on the West Union.
But do you want to talk about the other issues in the in the peer review?
Really, the only other big one that that's noticeable is the loading area for building one A. We originally had it up against the side of building one, the side of one A. The comment was that there is an access door on the side. So in order to have access and have access to the door and the loading area, we flipped it to the opposite side of the road. We still have the twelve foot wide loading area. We still have the twenty foot wide drive aisle. Everything works as before. It's just flipped to the other side of the road. A lot of the other comments in the peer review letter were just simple things like shifting a manhole or revising some inverts. We added some additional snow storage areas called out on the plan. But everything else was really with drainage, small, small items. So that was all addressed. We sent everything back out, comments on the letter, should verify all of GCG's concerns. The plan set matches. And and real quick, are are on the building, we're okay on that on flat roofs? Completely or?
Dale, just I've, over the last few days, I've kind of played phone tag with town council, but from my standpoint and through my kind of experience, I believe the planning board making that finding would be appropriate and would concur with the covenant.
Okay, I just want to make sure before we get too far into if we can even consider those things.
Yeah, I've been, I've been trying to touch base touch base with town council just to make sure and to kind of pick her brain and I will do so. She had the town, she was, she's busy doing town meetings throughout the state as as she consults with other communities. However, I have, I have put phone calls in and I planned to have that conversation. I was hoping to have that conversation yesterday, but it just didn't, our schedules didn't match up. I was hoping to have that conversation yesterday, but it just didn't, uh, our schedules didn't match up.
Yeah, I sent Peter the text, um, that I liked for, uh, doing a finding where we cite the covenant provision and say that, uh, the purpose of the provision is to avoid cheap-looking, flat roofs. And that with the Mansard roof, uh, because it includes a nearly vertical portion, uh, around the perimeter, uh, it is not an entirely flat roof and therefore is, uh, in agreement with the covenant, both, uh, in spirit and in the letter.
I'm good with that.
So that, that was, uh, a- and, uh, I think we do need to put something in the findings so that, um, nobody says, well, you didn't consider this.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, I think we've said from day one that the intent of that covenant, we would, would satisfy that. I think these plans fully do that. Uh, in, in, uh, hopefully Peter and us and town council can, and, you know, before, hopefully the board will have a, a meeting before the election. We can work on findings and a decision that, that goes through all that.
Alright, so what we have left, uh, before we would actually, uh, vote a decision, uh, GCG wants to, it is, needs to review the final changes to show that they actually did correct the issues they wrote, they, they raised. And, uh, we need to, um, have a, a unified decision on, uh, any architectural issues. And then I think, uh, other than that, it's, um, make sure we have all the conditions we want for the decision. Am I missing anything, uh, according to the planning director or other board members?
Uh, from my end, no, uh, you know, my biggest thing is, you know, make sure that the planning board feels comfortable with all the conditions that are put in with the decision. I have, and really the planning board satisfied with what the project is proposing from my standpoint. I have received the eve, the, the plans today, uh, and I will be sending those back off the GCG for final review, uh, which would then land, um, you know, the project one step closer, I would say. Uh, but from my standpoint, that's where, uh, mechanically the plant, that the proposal stands, uh, in my eyes.
Okay, um, before we, um, move ahead on this, uh, this is a public hearing, uh, so we, I should make sure, uh, I invite, uh, public comment every night that we talk about this. Uh, so is there any public comment on this at this time? Uh, Mark?
Okay, okay. Yes, I'm, I'm commenting saying without any outside things being said, this is being better off and the roof talk. My only, my only thinking was, um, the how, the, the arc, the arc or the, actually the design person that put on the edges on the roof is, um, that could be for drainage, for pipes to help drain water off the roof. And, um, I'm agreeing with the, um, with, um, this side bot person, bot guy there about the entrance and exit saying that's gonna be too thin and it could cause a traffic problem in there. And the tent and the, um, the town's engineering, um, questions and, uh, results that he wants to see, I think that's gotta be forthright and go forward with. And if there's, you know, changes, last minute changes, they gotta be involved too. But other than that, this is, this has gone forward as, and I, I appreciate Dale and Tricia with their back and forth. Tricia was bringing up points of, um, what she, what she knows about her, her business and Dale was compromising back and forth to understand her and trying to get through to get, get this, get this going forward. Other than that, it's, it's been a good night so far. Thank you. And mute me.
Glad we have one happy customer.
Uh, any other public comment at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Emory Bond here. I, I have a question. So, uh, one of the many meetings that we've had on this topic, something that's kind of fallen off the radar was, has there any been any resolution on the monument sign by the street? I know the, the owner of the storage building, as Peter said, is coming out next week. Um, has there been any further discussions about that sign changing or beautifying or is there any update available on the sign?
Peach, you want me to address that? I don't know if you got the drawing? Pete?
Uh, yes, Mr. Rodenheiser, could you please?
Okay, so I think you guys got the drawing. We had a sign company do, um, kind of like a mock-up, a change. Do you have it, Joe?
Yeah, I can put it up.
Oh, good. Thank you. Um, mind you, this has not been vetted by WSP, the storage folks yet. But I thought it was appropriate to at least get it to you guys so you guys could weigh in and say, uh, no, you're not going in the right direction. You are. Obviously not internally lit. Um, and it would be like kind of a wood grain background. Keep, I think that was something that you guys are interested in, correct me if I'm wrong. We are gonna use the same base. But, um, the, the lighting will change, you know, obviously to the penance above instead of internally lit. So if you guys could give guidance that we're heading in the right direction, keeping in mind, WSP has not signed off on this yet. I just got it to them. But I thought it was appropriate to share with you guys tonight in case somebody asks a question.
I think that's certainly better. Yeah.
Um, and then my next question, um, Mr. Magic, um, you mentioned that there was a meeting this week to talk about loan and hydro seed. And you mentioned that other, there'd be some other work occurring on the site. What is that other work?
So What else are you doing on the site? Excuse me. Uh, and, and so really it is to bring the grading down to a level where Bill could therefore just hi- you know, could, could loom in hydro seed. Um, and, and really to, to, to try to hopefully maintain the site as, uh, with, with grass rather than having Bill, uh, having to go out there and water on a daily basis. So what the, what the goal would be to have is to have
Have internet.
Uh, and dirt and, and get those boulders off the site and degrade it to a level where he could just loom in hydro seed. Um, and, and really, and hopefully that would preserve the site dust-free uh, until Mr. Rodenheiser, you know, plans to act on, um, any potential permits, I would say.
What's the timing of that work? Is that gonna be happening soon? Is that gonna be happening in the fall? What, what's the timing of that?
I, I hope to, I hope that work, I, I, I can't speak for Bill, but, uh, I hope that, that work is gonna happen, you know, sooner rather than later. With, you know, in high, you know, in, in, in respect to keep the dust down on the site. And, and so, um, Emory, I'm not too sure if you jumped on to the call earlier, but I, I did see that Bill over the last two weeks has been working with myself and, and I've been reaching out to the Ferrises, uh, to try to come to a solution, the best possible way to keep that dust down on the site. And, and so that's what, that's what we have been trying to talk about. And, and I'm, I'm happy to, you know, uh, organize a, a, a greater community-wide or a butterwide conversation with Bill. Uh, but my main concern was to make sure that, uh, the Ferrises at seventy-three West Union Street are, uh, are protected uh, with the limited dust coming off of the site.
Oh, that, that's great to hear. It's great to hear that the site's gonna be hydro seeded. So that's, that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Pete, just one, so it's not, I wanna make sure they understand it's not the entire site. It's the right side of the entry. Then we also discussed where the future building is going in the back with the other part of the storage area, the land that they own. We talked about, did Pete and I about cleaning that area up and getting, instead of that just being all dirt, they have to get their trash out of there. And then Pete also talked with me about maybe we would ship that, like, and clean that up. Then we have another twenty-five or thirty thousand square feet of area that's not susceptible to, uh, creating dust.
But i- and Mr. Rodenheiser does know that from here on out, you know, that he is responsible for dust coming off of that site now, you know? You know, every day he's gonna be responsible and, and I'm gonna, I'm acting on behalf of the planning board in the town to enforce that that dust is maintained and, and, um, and, and, and that's what it comes down to. And, and I, every day I'm in town, I drive by the site and, and, you know, I have, I have asked, you know, people in town, you know, including all DPW members and, and, and staff. Is, is every time they do drive by that site, if they feel that it is too dusty, to let me know. Uh, if I'm not in town, that I can therefore reach out to Bill, um, in a moment's notice, I would say.
Agreed.
And Pete, on the sign, when you have your meeting with the owner of the storage, I'm sure you're gonna emphasize that if they fix that sign up a little bit, it's gonna go a long way towards some goodwill, considering everything that happened, right?
Yes.
You know, get some of the sour taste out of, you know?
No, I, I
Be persuasive, yes.
W E S Dale.
Okay. I figured so.
All right. So at this point, I think we're as far as we can get tonight, because we have to wait for GCG. And, uh, we need to write up a decision. And am I correct that it's the consensus of the board that they should remove those architectural details they added underneath the dormers? Does anybody disagree with that?
I'll go along with whatever Trish says.
I'm gonna say I'll agree with you with anything having to do with music. I, I think they should come off.
Good.
And I, and then I think in the conditions, we should have the same thing as in Pond Street where we are looking at the final details for approval when they are submitted.
The construction drawings.
That's right.
That, that's on the overhang, right?
For the exterior, just the exterior skin, not, obviously, not the, nothing on the inside, not the structure, just the, the skin.
Needs to look just like whatever you prove, final approval.
So if you wanna change anything that, to make it look not just like how you presented it, we would need to review that again. And that, that goes to, you know, the color of the shingles you use, uh, everything.
We're keeping the color.
I, I like the lighter colored shingles and I know they're also more energy efficient.
I would actually though ask that colors, including roof colors, be submitted, the actual samples as we did for one twenty-eight. Because we all know that the renderings look very different than the actual samples. So we did that for one twenty-eight. We looked at the samples. And I think that would be appropriate to do here as well, rather than rely on a computer rendering.
I think we can probably get sample packs, right? Can't we? And have you, five or six, have you dropped that down hall?
Yeah, that could be, that could be down the road. That doesn't have to be now, you know?
Uh, the only other, uh, major thing would be on the conditions for construction. I know there've been a number of concerns, uh, with how phase one went and, and also of how the site has been managed so far. Uh, so we're gonna want to be watching it very carefully. I don't know exactly what we wanna put in there, uh, but Peter, you should certainly look at what is practical from the town's perspective. If, if we need to say, uh, they need to pay for extra oversight from the town or something during construction so that we have the budget to send somebody out there on a weekly basis or something. I, I don't know what the right answer is, but we should certainly look at that. I don't want this to become another problem site in the town. I know the construction, the, the construction period is always one of the most challenging parts of projects.
And at some point, the middle school might be opened again while they're working. So we have to remember that. Consider that mess when they're coming and going and
Thank you, Dale.
So if we're gonna make this work with the current board membership, uh, to vote on this, we would need to have an extra meeting next week.
We have that only on this and Ed?
That would, yes, only for this.
Okay, I can do that.
Can we get, can we get a draft put together and distributed before that meeting? Peter, just to try to make that, okay?
Yeah, I know. And so, you know, I have, I have had, I have a draft, uh, I've been working on a draft, you know, however, I do need to kind of, you know, make some changes. So it's gonna take me a day or two. And, uh, and, and my proposal would be to meet on not next week, but the week after, which would be the sec- twenty-second, which would be a Monday night, which would be before the election precedent. If that was, uh, if that's possible, which would give, um, me a full, we, you know, uh, at least Monday to get a decision together and out to Lisa for review. And then she could kind of kick it back. And then I could send that to the board, hopefully in, in a fast pace. Uh, so you, the board members could review it, then make any comments back to me before the meeting. Uh, or I'm happy to, to meet on, you know, say the eighteenth, which would be a week from today.
I'm happy with either.
Go ahead, Fred. Sorry.
I, I was just saying, I'm happy with either.
I can do either.
I can do either.
I can, I can do either.
Phil? So I'm gonna ta- I'm gonna take you up and, and take the twenty-second, just which would give us a little bit, give myself a little bit of breathing room.
Okay. And real quick, I mentioned, can we make sure we have full color, final elevation renderings, both the buildings?
Yes.
Not, it's not like it's this with that taken off or the, just the, the correct color.
Yeah, those will be stamped by the architect as well.
Okay, that we can refer to in our decision that that's the, what the buildings look like. We're visual, we're very visual. It's hard to tell us they're gonna change something without us seeing it, in it drawing. So at least me.
Yep, I can, uh, I would ask Peter to, to collect, you know, the most up-to-date and after, and then send them over to me no later than the next Tuesday. Uh, so I can kind of put those in the decision and, and send those off to town council.
All right.
With this, uh, obvious Take it away.
Uh, then I would, uh, entertain a motion to continue, uh, this public hearing and discussion to, uh, Monday, June twenty-second at seven fifteen PM.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Dale and seconded by Tricia. Roll call vote.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
And, and everybody's gonna be there, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I got Dale and Tricia voting.
Williams, aye.
Joe Riverton, aye.
And Preston Crowe, aye. That passes five zero. All right.
Thank you for your time, everyone. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Right, uh, moving on, we still have more on our agenda. Uh, we have a discussion of the current status of construction of the project at one twenty-eight Main Street.
Uh, so just to settle the table, uh, Preston and to the other board members, uh, obviously since our last meeting, uh, Carlos, uh, has been working with his architect. Uh, I believe on Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday, I did receive two new renderings from the architect, Carlos, uh, regarding changes that they're proposing. Uh, those were distributed out to the board members and I believe they were also posted on the town's website for review. So at this point, I will hand it over to the architect in Carlos to So at this point, I will hand it over to the architect in Carlos to explain uh those proposals. Uh, and and also Dennis, I'm gonna also make you a co-host if you care to share your screen uh and actually show the uh proposals to the audience.
Okay. Um, can everyone hear me? Yes, we can hear you.
Somebody needs to go on mute.
Um, anyway, so uh attached or or I'll share my screen here. Um, this is, this was the current state of the building when um everything kinda started, so. What we were tasked to do in the last meeting was try to address uh some of the issues that arose. You know, in fairness to Carlos, uh, the developer, um, you know, none of these changes were were done with ill intent or any type of malice involved. In his mind, he thought he was improving or beautifying um what had originally been there. Obviously, since then, he's realized the mistakes he's made on that. We've discussed them. And uh our goal is to try and remedy those um uh for the board. Uh, obviously to respect the original decision and try to bring it back to um a level or a harmonious kinda look uh here, so. Uh, this is the uh original state. We have two different options that we're presenting. Within this, if this will work, there we go. Oops, so here is um what we're pres- uh proposing to do in one of the options. Uh, this one here, um, we are going to remove all of the paneling, all the siding. Um, that was originally proposed, would go back onto the front facade. Um, we are addressing the issues with the railings. If you're able to see my cursor, there was a railing that was was not located properly. It was kinda floating in the air and it didn't give the illusion of what we're trying to accomplish with kinda that quasi Juliet balcony kinda look there. So all of that will be addressed and taken care of. Um, we addressed the uh paneling, we removed that. Um, and then as you come around the corner, uh, you can see we've removed the paneling there as well. They are infilled in this scheme and trimmed out with the same color as the the uh body of the horizontal siding. Um, you can kinda see them here. Obviously, they are, um, they're still panelized in this one, um, but they are obviously much more subdued. And then in this option, this is the secondary option, you can kinda see that slight change. Where we, we are addressing those panels with uh trim that matches the exterior white trim as well. Kinda toggle back between the two. Kinda take a look there. Some of the items that are, um, you know, and I I think, I think if uh, anyone who's worked with Carlos on the town level knows that he's an upstanding man. He's, he's been, I believe, a a pretty good person to work with, with the town of Ashland, and as I mentioned earlier, has all the intent to do the right thing. Some of the pieces that were brought to our attention were obviously the um, the lack of a witch's hat, which was originally designed on our mansard. That does come with a a very substantial um financial impact, and I don't think anyone on the board really wants to make this a a main issue on that sense, but at the same time, it's a reality thing and and it's something to talk about as well, so. With the the makeup of the majority of these changes, I think it definitely improves what was changed, um, and makes it a better overall composition, a lot closer to what we were originally planning to accomplish here. If I'm missing anything else, Dan from my office is also on the line. I think I kinda hit out all the points here.
Yeah, I think you got it all, Dennis.
I actually think one of the, one of the other things we need to talk about is the lack of um casing around the windows, which was originally shown on the renderings. There was white casing around all the windows and now there isn't any.
Yes, I I actually have the original rendering that I could share if you wanted to see that.
Yeah, could you do that, please, Preston?
And Dennis, also, just to make sure, the gutters, I know you're adding, does it, does it, are you planning to add gutters in this new rendering? The dark gutters?
The gutters are shown on the rendering, yes.
Okay, they're not shown on this plan that Preston's gonna pick up on, uh, or or share his screen on, so could you just please make note of those as well, please?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll let Preston share this and then um.
Yeah, thank you.
The um, the one thing I just see on those windows on the third floor, the upper two most right windows in the image Preston's sharing. If you look at those windows, the building kind of comes out to be in line. Um, yeah, exactly, with with that, with with that white edge. And I, and I think in the, I think in the rendering that you're just sharing, Dennis, um, I think those eaves are kind of, it looks like there's a lot of white, it's kinda protruding quite a bit. The eaves are kinda sticking out over those windows substantially. I I'm, again, I'm not an architect, but I I think those look very how that's done is very different. That's one, one thing I just see.
I I was, I was gonna mention that too. I didn't know if maybe the exterior trim maybe was stopped in process and wasn't finished because obviously there's a lot more trim detailed on the rendering as approved than is on the current building, but perhaps it's not finished.
I I agree, the trim looks very, I mean, in this rendering, the trim is quite sharp. And it is definitely lacking in 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 this revised, in that revised view, yeah.
And another little point, it's, I mean, it's small, but it it makes a difference. The bay windows. If you look at the bay windows in the drawing, they're bay windows. If you look the way they build them, it's like an alcove with three tiny windows in it. It's a whole different look. This one, if you notice the white in between the windows, there's a little thin strip of white vertical, cause it's like a bay window. If you look at what they built, it's like a foot and a half of of framing in between the windows, so it makes it really boxy and just another detail that's not not like on the drawing.
It's also a little hard to register because the, just in the um, you know, I have the uh photo of the existing building, you know, as built uh in front of me on another screen and the color that we're seeing here on these renderings is just so different than the color in actuality and and the um, and the black roof is just so much denser than the gray one that was proposed. Really is a much harsher look, so, you know, there's a lot we have to balance out here. Um, a lot different from the, quite, quite different from the original look, so. I think there might, there, there's a few other maybe stages of change that need to happen to soften this back up again.
I don't know if you can scroll down on that actual picture of the building as it's built. Can you see lower at where the bay windows are? I don't know.
Hey, you can see the white, the white patches there, you're right, Dale.
They're just boxy. They're like little tiny windows with bunch of framing around. If you go sit in front of the building and look at it, it's, it's a whole different look. It's not like a bay window. And the roof, I'm, I mean, I can, we can refer to our decision, if you read number twenty-nine, all facade materials, i.e. siding and roofing shall be advised while even siding with color scheme as per plan or as otherwise approved by the planning board. Roof is the opposite. The dormers aren't anywhere near.
Yeah, I also see in the um, in the picture, you can see this section of roof is set back a little bit. I don't see that here. Not sure I don't like it, but it it is different. I do see that your proposal does uh restore the, the top of the windows back to, back more to this style, but it, it's that style sticking out over the front, so the windows are still way recessed from what.
Yeah.
The the plan has them out here and then this has them recessed with that over the top. It's a very different design.
Yeah, and you're gonna see both sides of that building from the road. I think the side ones need to be what's on the drawings too.
Yeah, and and the, the other side too, the side by the bank is is very visible. The only side of this building that doesn't get i- isn't quite visible is the back.
Yeah.
The, 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 the color, uh, a- a- actually, the panels on the side in in the, in the rendering that you, that was just shared, I I I'm, I'm not sure why the proposal is to keep the panels on that side of the building. I'm just unsure. Um, I'm just unsure, unsure why, um.
It's a, I mean, construction wise, for you to remove the panels, you basically waste and need to throw away all of that siding as well. Uh, so the hope was at least maintain, obviously soften the mistake that was made there. Um, keep it on the same color, so that's why, so you can't really uh stitch them back in. You end up, you end up having a ton of waste. On the front, obviously, we believe the front facade needs to look, um, you know, closer to the, the original rendering and that, that we felt was you know, something that we could do to give back and and try to remedy the situation that we created.
But actually, the sides, when you're driving up, you're seeing the side more than you're seeing the front. I mean, front's right out on the street, but you're seeing the side as you drive up. You see it the whole time you're driving past the front. You just drive past it. It's, and and as far as trying to, I understand what you're trying to do is minimize your losses. But the whole thing was somebody made a decision to do it differently. And we, I don't understand why we have to compromise what we approved because of a mistake on your part, I.
Well, I mean, ultimately, you, like you said, you don't have to compromise. I mean, as people, I think we all make mistakes and and Carlos has owned up to that and is trying to do his best to make it right. I mean, I also don't think it's in anyone's interest to try and make this. You know, believe me, I get the visual impact. My job as an architect is to design and try to make things beautiful and um, you know, if you think it was my decision for this to all occur, you're incorrect, but we all have clients and we need to help help them out as well, so. Respectfully, on behalf of Carlos, I hope there's a middle ground that we can kinda reach so that we are not you know, for instance, you're referring to dormers on the front, which I think you know, we'd be willing to kinda talk about and try to address those. But when you start to get into forty-something dormers around the entire building, that's when it becomes a total different level of change and I, and I, I hope there's some level of you know, that, again, we made the mistake, but you guys would hopefully work with us, just like you have throughout the whole process. I mean, I was in there for twelve months straight of meetings with you guys and I think we were very open to the board's suggestions and try to make things work with you guys, just as much as you did with us, so we're, we're apologetic. But we're also here, uh, kinda hat in hand, knowing that you guys can kinda do what you want to us, but we're hoping, you know, it doesn't become
I take a little exception with saying that we can do what we want with you. Uh, it's a little bit offensive. Be approved of plan and a drawing, and you guys had it and you built a di- you built it different. Somebody decided to do it different. It, this shouldn't be on us. And it shouldn't be our responsibility to make sure that your losses are minimal because, you know, we're not trying to bankrupt you and and this stuff won't bankrupt you, but I, I mean, that's not, if you look at the decision a year, we spent a year or two of our time trying to get this thing as, as good and it's controversial downtown and there was all kinds of back and forth, and we got it to a point where it's a nice looking building and then you built something different. I, I, I guess that if it's not what's on our approval, I, I don't know what our options are. Unless we have to, I don't know if you can take back the special permit. I don't know what we had, what would be worse.
I assume, I assume in not knowing the, not knowing the process um of of what happened in Ashland here with the construction process, but I assume, um, you know, these items are not on Mr. Colwell's drawings. And I assume even though his sign is prominently out front, that there wasn't a clerk of the works from his office out there uh supervising or signing off on the various stages of the process, or I imagine they wouldn't have gone this way. So I, he's probably in the position of, as, as he said, standing up for his client, or, you know, representing his client. You know, in a, given the architectural language and try to explain things. So, but I assume these, I think he's made, obviously, these decisions were not his. But it is still up to us and the planning board to make the final make the final call. So I feel like he's taking the heat here for the team. Um, and I just wanted to uh note that that was probably the case.
It's because he's talking for the team, so who else?
I agree.
So I'm not. I'm not upset with him. I'm upset with who decided to put a black roof on and said, yeah, those are the shingles, do it, and it doesn't even look like a drawing hanging on the fence. And who decided to put panels on it way back when? Somebody made a decision and told somebody to go ahead and put those panels up. At that point, they took the responsibility and the risk of it being wrong. I, I I don't understand why we have to compromise. I mean, it, it's, it's siding.
No, I, I agree with you, Dale. There was obviously someone who had an extreme misunderstanding of the process, so.
Yeah.
Well, somebody deliberately made a change because carpenters don't come in and build something that's not, they're not told to build. So somebody down the line, i- it made a decision to do it differently than what's even hanging on the fence. I mean, you look at the fence and it's not even the same building right behind it.
Can we, yeah, can we talk about the the downspouts in the updated rendering as well? Those downspouts that's right on that front edge of the building?
Black.
Yeah, black pipe. I, I mean, uh, yeah, I, I know, like, some, that, some of that detail, uh, you know, that, that, there weren't downspouts in the rendering, the final approved rendering. I get it that there's some, there's just some details that, that that, you know, it, it's not a, it's not a picture, but uh it's a tough look on that front corner, the black pipe coming straight down. Is there any way, like?
Changing that to white would probably be a very easy ask. That's probably the easiest thing we could ask them for of everything tonight.
I mean, is there any way to relocate it? I, I mean, from that, at that corner. I agree with you, Preston. White would certainly address, but like, could that go back to the, the, uh, on the side there?
Yeah, I'm sure s- something we can do is especially the, the changing color. It's not installed yet. I, I don't know if anything's been purchased or not. Dan, do you have information on that or Carlos?
We, we don't have to rattle on that. I just wanna just throw that out there.
We, uh, Carlos and I briefly discussed that, um. Like I, I said, I recommend to Carlos, white would probably be the better look, um, as it just doesn't stand out as much, so, um, you know, that was sort of my recommend, re- recommendation for that. But uh, we do, we were looking at both options.
And and look at the dormers. I mean, they're really on the building you build, it's not really a dormer. If you, it sticks out barely at the top. It's not really like a dormer. The other ones, there's dormers starting from the bottom point all the way to the roof of the dormer is out front. These other ones are like little balconies.
Yeah.
So maybe you have to frame those out and re-drywall, move the window out, put new siding on and do the dormer, dormers the way they're supposed to be done and. They hate, you know, I mean, it's money's money, uh, but somebody decided to do that. And that ends up costing you money if you make a mistake.
I think maybe the general thought here is, and I'm not sure we'll come to the exact conclusion even tonight, but the, the proposed changes just aren't going far enough. They're not, they're not addressing all of the, e- e- even if, even a poor, enough of a portion of the changes and mistakes that have been made, so I think I think it needs to be looked at again in in a deeper way. I, I'd love to know again about the window casings. Window casings are extremely traditional. It's what, one of the things that makes the building look traditional instead of modern is to have window casings. So can we cut in window casings? You know, I think, I think you need to make a list of all these things that are different and the, you know, we don't, I don't think we even had the bay windows on there, the differences in the look of the bay windows being this little delicate old fashioned thing versus something that seems kinda stuck on. So I think we, I, I think, I think it needs a much deeper look, that it's not just the panels and and kinda the easy fixes. There's gonna be some tougher fixes too. So I think we, I I think I think it needs a much deeper look, but it's not just the panels and and kind of the easy fixes. There's going to be some tougher fixes too.
Well, the proposed, um, corrected version still has the same bay windows as the original approved version.
There's nothing like what the, there they are. If you go, just drive by and look at them.
I just wanted to point that out. Um, my perspective on this is we've had developers build things that are different from what they submitted before and come back and ask for, uh, uh, you know, uh, apologize instead of ask for permission essentially. Uh, the way I have always approached it is look at what they are asking for in the new version and say, if if they had come to us originally and said, that's what we want to build, would I give them the permission? So I don't penalize them for making the changes if e- even if it's retrospective, you know, I I try to pretend, okay, say you came and said you wanted to build this other rendering, and hadn't started broken ground yet, would I approve that? And if the answer is yes, then maybe I'm upset with you for having done something different, but I will still approve it. I don't think the changes you presented so far meet that standard for me. But of course, I'm not going to be on the board the next time you come back on this, so, uh.
And I agree with you, Preston. It's the same way I look at it. It's is would we have approved what they built? I know we wouldn't have approved that because to start right off the bat, it had, I believe their original drawing had the black shingles and we nixed that right off the bat. We didn't want the dark roof because it looks heavy and bulky. It's right downtown. So the roof was wasn't gonna go through anyway, so that needs to be changed. And going from siding on the front and then having panels on the side, that's it it just doesn't look, I mean, we just got done talking about that last one, how to have some consistency, so need the siding needs to be fixed. You know, stuff like the bay windows, it doesn't look as good, but maybe we can live with that downstairs and the thing.
The clear, the clearance between the overhang and those bay windows is also like really tight. That overhang is sitting right on top of those, right on top of the top of those windows.
It it's, yeah, it's not like.
There's like, no, there's no room. Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, maybe it's just dark and I can't see it, but like in that picture, I can clearly see her white, see white and there's so, there's a lot of black under there. I don't get it. Maybe it's not painted, uh, but.
Yeah, it looks to me like what you're, what is actually there for the bay windows is much more like what was done up at the top. Then, uh, the kind of, uh, style where, uh, it's presented in any of the renderings.
The renderings, it's a bay window. You know, you you order a bay window, you put it in there. It has a little roof on it. Here they built an Alco and framed the roof on it and framed it all up and put some windows in, and it's a whole different look. It's cheaper.
It may, it's just, this is the heart, this is the heart of the town. This is main street. It it's, it's, it's like.
Spent a lot of time, a lot of time and effort and public input and and design review and everything on this and a lot of the details and.
Yeah, th- this is something that's gonna be downtown for the rest of my life and you know, we're, I'm gonna see this on a daily basis and I don't want to look at this every time I go downtown and think they should have done that right.
And to your point, Preston, we would have, if this, the new rendering they have here came up, we would have changed a lot of things on that. If that was the rendering they presented, we would have changed. There's a lot of stuff on there. I can see that, that we wouldn't have agreed with. Trim around the window. This is a whole different look with that white trim around the window. It changes the whole look of the building. You know, the roof line's not even the same. So it's unfortunate. But I I you can only feel so bad when somebody had made conscious decisions to do it differently. And they, and it ended up being, if it's gonna cost them money, I feel bad about it, but if they would have built it like the rendering, we wouldn't be here.
And in fact, we can still see some things in their proposed rendering and the, uh, what's been built so far. There there's still more we haven't mentioned. Um, you know, if if, once you start looking closely.
Those railings are completely different too.
Well, the re- the, um, uh, the the, on the tower portion, they've got siding up above the windows. There is no siding up above the windows.
Yeah.
Because they don't have the, they don't have the trim on there either.
Yeah, but my point is that even in their proposal of this is what we're gonna do to fix it.
It's not there.
It's still not matching, uh, what I think we would actually end up getting.
Okay.
So I I I I think that if you're making a proposal for what you're gonna build, uh, or how have as the final result, uh, you need to pay really close attention to those details and and make sure your proposal is right.
Remember our.
I don't think it is.
And remember, we're focused, we're telling you because you're here to relay it. This is not against you. This is not anything. It's, it's, you're here representing them, so we're telling you where we're at with all this, so.
There's no hurt feelings here. I've been doing it long enough where I have no soul anymore, so I'm fine. I want this to, um, like, I feel your pain and when I say, it's on you guys, you can do what you want. It really genuinely is because you guys do have the control. I wanna try and give you description that just kind of makes, you know, my client happy, but also you guys happy because there's a gap right now. Unfortunately, without me saying, what would you guys like me to do? And then also saying, what would you like me to do? I'm kind of stuck between and fine. Um, if you guys could give me, and and this is a risky question, but it's a, it's a fair one at this point. Could you kind of give me maybe your must have, so to speak, versus the, you know, like, we talked a little bit about the bay. We talked now, we just talked a little about the trim work at the top, et cetera, like, I I think if there's a hierarchy almost like of a prioritization, that would help indicate me, no, like, this is really important to the board. We need to start here and then kind of chip away at it that way. I know how to design. I know how to make a composition look apart. I just also don't know where we kind of blend the line between fixing this, saying mea culpa, we're sorry, we didn't mean to screw this up. Um, and and I know it's, it's kind of, it's coming across as if he did it with the sole intention to save money. That I can tell you was not doing. Some of this stuff was extra and I said, you know, what, whoa, what happened here? And unfortunately, sometimes in inspections, as Tricia will tell you, you go out for an inspection and you go, okay, that that wasn't what we drew, but we're here now. Let's see how we can kind of make this, uh, work. Um, in in this case, this is not one of those projects where it's just private and we work with the client and the developer. We have to answer with you guys as well, so. If we could have some assistance with that, if that's too much to ask, I totally understand it. I'm just trying to, um, you know, make it so we're not back and forth with you guys three or four more times and and you guys are even more frustrated with it.
So, so my, so I hear, I hear what you're asking, Dennis, and, um, I think, you know, my reaction to your ask is like, I, I think you've got, uh, five different members on the board here and and I think that the conversation about like, you know, getting to like, what what are the, you know, you know, what are the, what are the things that, what are the imperatives? What are the things that, you know, like, I I think that's like a separate conversation amongst the board. I'm not sure that, you know, I'm not sure that we can kind of hack that out here. Uh, it's just my opinion. So like, whether that's like an exact, some kind of a session with the planning board where we kind of just hang out on a piece of paper and kind of, we start to go through and stack rank and and something like that. I I mean, you know, shy of just saying, no, like, you know, this is what you're doing to build that, right? Like, I understand you're asking. Sorry, Dennis.
No, I I I was saying the same sentiment. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was just saying, it's tough for, and I and I get the sentiment. Why are you asking us what you should do? You were approved for that, build that. I totally understand that, but the reality is we're here, so I'm trying to
And I'm trying to not take that attitude and say that to you, right? Like, I I like, I get it. So that's my opinion. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks in terms of an approach, yeah, um, that approach or, you know.
Well, because just, uh, like, uh, as a point, if I I had a contractor and I designed my perfect building, which is our rendering, and and he came out and built what's there, I wouldn't pay the guy. I mean, that's, that's how different it is from what I designed. I mean, it own decided that I'm gonna like that better. No, you need to put, build what I'm paying you to build. It it's, and I understand, we're not trying to bank, but it it those decisions, the builder needs to to think about that when he decides to change something that if it's wrong, it's gonna, he's gonna have to fix it.
The one piece on that, just to clarify, is obviously the the builder is the owner, is the developer, so there is there isn't that relationship you're describing, but I understand what you mean.
You see that white lip in the left rendering on the very first floor above the columns? Is that like just an archi, no, yeah, that that lip, yeah, is that, is that, it's clearly not there in the actual picture. Is that just like an architectural feature that happens after? Is that trim or what what?
I mean, to be, to be fair and to be honest, this pieces, some of these are architectural elements or things that we're rendering in preliminary design. We don't go into full CDs. I mean, there's a whole steel package, et cetera. We get into the structure of it. Some things do change, so I see that revision there and I, and I think obviously if they had followed along with the rest of the stuff, probably these things you guys would never look twice at, but now you start to look at everything. Um, do you understand that a 3D rendering is just that? I mean, we haven't developed a full set of drawings, so some of the trim, you know, you can, if you kind of move to the left, the balconies, there's a thickness of, you know, thickness of structure that wasn't in the rendering that has to occur, um, due to um, sprinklers that need to be run underneath. So that there's just some minor changes that I hope we can kind of work through. But yeah, that's, that's definitely one that was a suggestion in the 3D, but not a reality thing.
Then the, then where the railings are in the front, I guess you could fix one, but it lowered it or did some, but it needs to look like the upper one, it, on the rendering, it looks like it's a balcony. There's a li- a little
A hundred percent.
Out. This looks like it's floating any, somewhere.
Yeah, in our, our suggestion.
Yeah. The other one looks like it's something holding the two pieces of the building together.
Right, and and we're suggesting that as a, as a, uh, modification to to make this better again or try to fix it, so.
And actually, I mean, a lot of those features are there. I have opened your, your stamped architectural drawings and um, that little channel, you know, under that we're, that, um, Joe was asking about. It's on the drawing. You know, that that element is there. It's on the, it's on the construction drawings. So, um, Yeah, so it it seemed like things were followed through actually really well from the rendering to the construction drawing with my, you know, kind of preliminary look at it here. Um, so um, yeah, so it's just.
That is, you know, we can, we can trim that out, face it, and we can, we can accomplish that look. That's why I'm not concerned about doing that piece, if that's something that's important. I guess, again, it goes back to what Joe and I were talking about, just, I need to, maybe there's a tech session or we can sit in on it. We could not be in on it. We'll do whatever you guys would like at this point.
What what are the rest, uh, and what are, what are the rest of you guys think about my my suggestion? Or I mean, like, do you wanna just try to start to grind it out here? I mean, it's ten oh five. Um, like, what do you guys think? I just feel like this is a long combo. Um, and hard, and a really hard combo, like, I'm, I'm, whatever. What do you guys think?
I think the dormers need to look like they do on the rendering all the way around. I need siding needs to look like it does all the way around. The roof color needs to change. And trim around the windows. Those are my important thing. Cause that's the, pretty much the, the whole look.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that that, you know, saying that is basically stripping it down to framing, you know, not not framing, to sheathing. You know, leaving the shape on the roof, but the without the swoop, which which was part of the character, but it's, it's take.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, it's so much different, yeah.
If you look at the building when you're down there, it does turn out a little bit, but not like the rendering, not as much as the rendering. It looks like it turns out one shingle on the bottom goes fans out a little bit or something. But it doesn't have the look of the the rendering.
It's taking, it is taking a serious look at it, you know, for, um, you know, cause look is is so dramatically different that I, um, that it may, it may need to go further than what any of us would like. You know, I don't think anyone wants to have a little scrap pile full of wasted materials, you know, um, but on the other hand, none of us want to look at something we don't like for the next twenty years. So so it is really going back. Um, and and I would ask if, you know, in the future renderings, though this might be the color that the other rendering was, it doesn't reflect the true color of the building, which I think is strange, like, um, it's greenish almost. So I think we, I think we need to look at it kind of realistically in the rendering to make something that look good, looks good potentially with that color. Or we're considering painting it. If if that's, if that was the approved color, I don't, I don't know.
Physically approved color. I know there was a separate conversation post, I think, our last wrap up session.
Yeah, sometime last year, maybe. So, but we need to start, you know, using the thing that's actually on there if if it's going to stay. Even the roof color, you know, the the gray that or the, you know, the black that we're showing in the rendering has some modeling and some dimension to it where we're looking at something that's just the flattest black, you know, very modern looking, but modern looking is kind of exactly opposite to what I think the planning board voted on at the time.
I mean, right down to those tube lights on the pillars there. I mean, uh, those lights, y- you know, those, those really don't tuck in with what the the theme was here. I I don't think, I'm not a lighting expert, but it 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 seems pretty modern, uh, or I'm I'm well out of my depth on lighting, but it 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 doesn't, you know, I don't know, maybe, maybe it will look nice.
They don't even have them on the rendering. Also, there's an extra post in there. I don't know if that's structural or not.
It is, yeah.
Cause if you park in front of the building the way it is now, it looks with that extra post, it does look really crammed in there. But if it's structural, I guess we're stuck with that.
We went back and forth on the post when we were doing the, the hearings and we decided it looked better without it and then they put it in.
And and to to that point, Preston, they went the other day and sat in front of the building and it does look crowded with that extra post, so. You know, I think we're correct on that, but either way, that's not something that's gonna make or break this thing. So there are some things that I'm willing to let slide, but there are some things that I, I'm not.
Yeah. So so do you guys, do you guys wanna do a session? Um, to to kind of go through this and 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 try to work through, work it through. I hear you, Dale. I I hear your point. I I and you know, you you're kind of, you you're you're kind of quick draw with with your, those things, but there's just so much here and, um, I I don't know.
Drawing, I'm looking at it and as a matter of fact, the more I look at it, the more things I see that I don't like. So the sooner they can get this going through, it's gonna be better for them and do some of the things that really need to be done. Because then you start looking at it and from this angle, I'm looking and you know, that manser roof doesn't turn out a little, it looks really boxy now. I was thinking, you know, you probably let that slide, but now it looks kind of boxy. You know, so the more we sit here and go over it, the more we're gonna start picking out stuff.
Tricia, Phil, like, what do you guys think? How how do you, how do you wanna handle? Uh, Preston, I'm not trying to exclude you, but I'm just trying to, I'm not sure if you're gonna be around to be part of this conversation, so jump in.
You know, I I don't know. It's such a, I'm, it's such an extraordinary maybe, you guys have planned for much longer than I have, but I haven't heard you talk about any like thing like this happening before. Oh, and this is how we handled it last time, you know? So, um, but I I I guess from, you know, it's, I I feel like it's kind of going back to the drawing board, that the, the main thing is to understand and to remember at that time what the, what the important, the, what the important feel of the project was. And so not to go looking at this as kind of picking and choosing what can be changed and not change the easiest and cheapest. But how, what do I need to do? But how, what do I need to do to get the feel of the project back? You know, like, it it's kind of putting a piece of trace over it as a designer and. And say, how do I get it to feel like it's supposed to feel? And then have to see what what the dollar sign is on that, which kind of isn't the planning board's problem in a way. We can be sympathetic to it. But it is a prominent site, so, but I don't, I I don't think it's something we can do here, and I don't think it's something that we can do piecemeal. I would suggest maybe they go and instead of presenting us with one option, try to give us. A variety of options, you know, three different options. Hey, we tried this, we tried this. You you know, to try to get that feel back without stripping the whole thing down to the beginning. To see if it's possible. I'm not saying it is possible, to see if it's possible, to get to that point that like Preston said. You know, if if it came to me this way, would I say yes? You know, even though it's not the same as it was before.
I think, I think that's a fair ask, and we can, we can look at that for you. I guess the only ask we'd have back is. We probably don't want to pull up the old rendering in front of all this, because it's inherently always gonna create the, well, that's over there. That is an inherent routine and it's impossible to change that at this point. So if we're gonna look at as a whole. New composition, which I think is a fair way to look at it, obviously, we're modeling it. Originally, it was designed off your. I'm sorry, I'm losing the name of it, but your base bylaws that the look that you guys had looked for in your your actual downtown bylaws. That's where this Mansard and everything came from, so.
Form based code.
Thank you, appreciate it, struggling. The form based code, I think if if we on our end, instead of giving you guys homework, we re- review the form based code. And try to, you know, make it fit within that and then also look the part, I think. That would be a a good, good way to kind of approach it.
I think it's also important for you guys to. Looking both at the original, for you to look both at the original rendering and what is constructed now. And for you guys to have an extremely detailed list for yourselves. Of what is different, so that we're not actually the ones pointing out all the things that are different, that you're like, yep, we knew that one, we knew that one too, we knew that one too.
Because where does it go from there if we can't agree on it? We say, no, we want the original building.
I don't know. I don't think we know yet.
And and definitely remember, this is in the heart of downtown and it's very visible on at least three sides. Yeah, if if this was twenty feet back, if this, if we had a twenty foot setback, then the the view on the sides wouldn't be as big a deal, but still.
I think it's an exercise in giving the team a chance. I don't know how great of a percentage chance it is, but a chance. To save some of the work. We're gonna, and then we're gonna see.
The whole building, the inside, everything, it's, they're not changing that. The big end thing is those dormers just don't even look like dormers. So if they fix the dorm, siding, those panels, don't like that, so the siding. And the color of the roof are the three major things, you know, they said they're gonna fix those railings to make them look more like they're on a deck. But those are three, that doesn't seem like that huge of an ask when it's that far off from what it's supposed to be. That's all I'm saying. If you put, if you put that little Manser roof, like they say, on those dormer windows and it sticks out two feet. That's just kind of weird. It's like a drive through window or something. That it's doesn't look like it should.
All right, I'm gonna stop my screen share.
So anyway, that's where I'm at, so they know where I'm at.
So I think that's probably about as far as we're gonna get on that this tonight. I don't think there's any disagreement on that. Good? Let's move forward on to other items. Yes.
Do you just want to note though, when, well, Dennis already signed off, but. Do you want me to add this to the next agenda, or would you like to at least push it out to another date to make sure everyone's on the same page?
I I think you should, since I'm not going to be chairing the next meeting, I think you should work with the assistant chair. As to what should go on the agenda for that meeting. But the the meeting we're doing on eighty one West Union is just eighty.
What we could do is is move it to July ninth, which would be the next date of. The Widmore Drive extension, and and so we would theoretically skip over our our scheduled second meeting in June.
What 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 date are you proposing, Peter?
June, it would be Ju- July ninth. So it would almost give Dennis and Carlos a month to kind of think about putting everything together, if that's what they would like to do. Right now, our second meeting in June would be scheduled for the twenty fifth, which I believe. Is the day after the election.
That is correct.
Which would be fairly soon, we could therefore just move it to July ninth and we could have a little bit of a reprieve. From our next meeting. Would we like to move this to, you know, continue this to July nine?
This is not something that requires.
Doesn't require anything.
Date, so so I think this should be worked, the the schedule on this should be worked out offline unless you need the the other planning board members to weigh in.
Dennis, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I mean, my only concern is obviously there there is ongoing construction. I I haven't spoken to Carlos about it, and then also there's the. Time crunch and pressure for us to, with other projects, to try and get this together. So on the architectural end, selfishly, the month sounds great, but. He has ongoing work that's going in the building. I need to chat with him a little bit. Okay, thank you.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
See you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is a review of, I'm sorry, a modification to scenic road permit four thirty three Chestnut Street.
Uh, yeah, so I can take this. So, if everyone can remember, a couple months ago, the planning board approved the scenic way road opening at. Three, uh, four thirty three Chestnut Street. Uh, there's a house that 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 the town is actually selling to be to be renovated. Uh, historically, and then there's a barn in the back, and the barn actually belongs to. Framingham State, and so what the town had to do was to create easement. Well, first, they, we, you know, we have David Foster, the project manager. They obtained a, and the planning board approved of a scenic way road opening. Along the stone wall, and it was, and it was, and it was really going to be, to give access to Framingham State. Access to the barn structure that they use for their facilities and their maintenance of that Warren. I believe it's the Warren Woods Conference Center, a large open field area. What the 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 modification is to change the twelve feet driveway. To a twenty feet drive. It's gonna be crushed stone material that's gonna be laid down. However, Framingham State and all in within their. Negotiations with the town always has requested a twenty feet easement, and Mr. Foster. At the time of the public hearing between the planning board noted that it was gonna be a twelve feet, a foot wide easement. And so just for clarification, he has requested a modification to change that. That driveway path from twelve feet to twenty feet, so all documents line up. Correctly regarding Framingham State's access to that historical barn in the back of the house.
What is the process that we have to go through as a planning board to do this? Because it. That that's a significant permit for, you know, with public hearings and all of that.
It just came to me, and and so I just, I want to put it on the planning board's agenda. I have not advertised this yet, and and I can, and I will do so, but I I just really want to brief everybody on what is happening.
Oh, okay, so it's just to let us know.
Okay, so we can, upcoming meeting is what you're saying.
Yeah, I just want everyone to let you, everyone know that it's it's gonna be an upcoming meeting and. And and the process is coming and it's a forward to it. Uh, they're trying to move as quick as possible, and I just kind of, and it came to. To the planning office about a week or two ago, and and I'm gonna have to notify for it, however. It is, I just kind of want to make sure it's on everyone's radar.
All right, the next item of business then is a review of twelve Pond Street final plans.
Uh, so I did send, so this is part of the packet and the information that I sent out to everybody. And they have submitted construction drawings and I sent those out, everyone's review. Uh, it's part of the decision that the planning board votes and reviews them. However, if if the board would like a little bit more time, I understand. However, it is part of their condition, it's part of, it's a condition within their permit.
I I would say we definitely need to take the time to review it, because there are changes that they are proposing on the front elevation. Other than what we approved, and I'm not saying they're bad changes, but there are changes so that we will want to review them specifically, compare them to the. What we approved and decide if we think it's okay, because there are kind of, kind of significant changes. But not necessarily bad ones, I would say.
Okay, would you like the applicant to appear in front of the planning board?
It might expedite the process, I I guess. I mean, I've only looked at them since you just sent them, you know, but right away, some things jumped out at me. As as differences, and I don't want to get in this one twenty eight situation again, we wanna. You know, we want to try to catch it early.
Yeah, yeah, I would strong, I would strongly echo Tricia's sentiment, and and I think the applicant should be present. If there's a lick of change. It pays needs to be present.
Okay, I will, I will put that on the next meeting agenda. Well, yeah, which theoretically would be the ninth if we're gonna move that, however, after the last application. Uh, we could, you know, schedule a meeting, or we could hold our regular meeting, which would be on the twenty fourth. And we could have that as one of the. As an agenda item, and I think that would be appropriate, and and maybe we can have one twenty eight main come back if they're ready. And and meet and for an agenda item on this one, so.
I I didn't, yeah, I didn't understand why we weren't doing the twenty fifth. I. I I thought I missed something that we were jumping.
Sounds like we're hoping just to get away with not having it.
Summer holidays, Trish, but no, I think it's appropriate to have it and and to keep things moving. I did not know if if the architect would be ready to move forward, you know, in two weeks. With the amount of changes or just from the conversation of the planning board, that's pretty much where my.
I'm okay having some shorter meetings.
So can I, can I just square on schedule for just a second, because there's just been a ton in this, in this meeting? So, when are we doing the eighty one West Union decision again?
Monday the twenty second at seven fifteen.
Okay, so Monday, June twenty second at seven fifteen P M, that's eighty one West Union decision only.
Correct.
Okay, and then, and then on that Thursday, the twenty fifth of July, we are going to have. A meeting to review twelve Pond Street and any other business and any other.
Twenty Main Street, yep, if they're ready.
Okay.
That's up to them, and I can talk to them offline, and then also with that meeting, please know Preston will not be. Uh, chairman, he will not be a member of the board theoretically, and you know, not theoretically, but we will have a new member of the planning board. And so if that person will be joining us, hopefully, and we will have to talk about reorganization. Of the board, as appropriately so at this time of year. And that can be added to the agenda, or we could leave that to the night to Ju- to July ninth.
I mean, I mean, my reaction here is, is like. June twenty second, that's not gonna be a, like, that's not gonna be a short meeting, it's gonna be a dedicated topic, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a couple of hours. Then we're gonna go to June twenty fifth, we could do twelve Pond and one twenty eight Main, that's gonna be a long meeting. If we throw the reorg on top. That's gonna add not a ton of time, but it's another item of business. I don't know, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but.
We also have to make sure the new person is sworn in, right?
Uh, yes. There's not a lot of time, so why don't we keep the reorganization for June, for July ninth, let's do that.
Joe can handle it.
Is the rest of the board okay with that? Tricia, you okay with that?
You okay with that, Preston? Oh, you're gonna be gone.
I object, but it doesn't matter. Uh, Mark, I do see you have your hand raised, but this is internal board scheduling matters, so we're not gonna. Do that now.
No, it's late, it's late.
Yeah, it's it's really late.
Let's just finish what we got to take care of.
So I'm sorry, I I'm drawing this out, so then July ninth, one twenty eight Main and or maybe, maybe not, depending on if it. Falls into the twenty fifth of June.
Correct, then we'd be with that Widmore Estates. There'd be a reorg and then I'll have to fit in this modification to the. To the scenic way opening, but that should hopefully be fairly short.
Okay, yeah, anxious to understand a little bit more about that one.
Is there any, did you hear anything about ever when live meetings will go back or anything? Is that just not even a?
At this point, Dale, I have, you know, I think last week I was so focused on helping, helping every, helping all, you know, working with all the departments. To get outdoor seating organized.
We're gonna need a lot bigger table to keep six feet apart.
I think for the time being, we should get used to doing Zoom.
I was just wondering if you heard anything.
I haven't heard anything, I haven't heard anything. I would be surprised if we went back to board meetings in Town Hall before Labor Day.
Yeah, I think, and and when we do, there'll still be plenty of people who don't feel safe. And so we need to find a hybrid method where. Even if the entire board is in Town Hall, that members of the public still have potentially some electronic communications. I don't know what that's gonna look like, and it's not just the planning board, you know, the school committee, the select board, all the. All the town boards need to look and come up with a unified system for that. As well as, you know, other towns, we're not the only town dealing with this.
All right, I was just, just wondering if you had any updates, but that's okay, we can move on.
Yeah, I know, I do know, once I hear of something, I'll I'll let everyone know, but I haven't seen anything come across.
What else do we need to go over?
Okay, next item of business, Metro West Regional Collaborative Board Representation Discussion. I'm just gonna, I I've mentioned this before, it's very important that you pick somebody. Who is interested in participating, if you have questions going forward on this. Once you have the new board, feel free to reach out and I I can talk at length about this and why it's important and. Uh, it's a great thing, it's a great opportunity for someone to really develop relationships with. Town officials and state elected officials outside of just Ashland. So I will leave that at that. The next item is discussion of downtown zoning grant.
Yeah, I just want to let everyone know that if you're on the town's email update. Uh, that the, that the planning office, before I arrived to see the grant from the state. It was twenty five thousand dollars, we're working with MAP, and the grant is really to review the downtown zoning. Uh, and so we're working with M A P C, they're going to, they're reviewing the downtown zoning. And actually, there's a survey that went live, uh, it was posted within the uh, kind of Ashland's newsletter. Uh, yesterday, and so things are up and rolling in that grant, and I will send the link over to the planning board tomorrow. Uh, and and or if you not ever received it within the town. And that's it.
Oh, okay, uh, review and approval of minutes from May fourteenth.
We can move these to the next meeting on the twenty second if you would like. But I know it's getting late.
Um. Sure.
Yeah.
Um. Administrative meet, uh, matters, future meetings, public hearings, I think we've covered all of that.
Mm hmm.
Uh, report from board members and town planner, does anyone else have anything else?
Should I make a motion to?
Before, what, can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
Sorry, on those May fourteenth minutes, are we up against the wire on those, because I know we don't, we need to get it posted in a certain amount of time.
I think we have three meetings, so if we do it at our next meeting. We meet the three meeting requirement.
There there wasn't much on there, there was just the um. It was just the five Homer ad, it was the meeting where something uh, eighty one West Union didn't get on the agenda, so it was actually a short meeting.
Let's just do it, just knock them down, guys.
Yep, let's do it.
Okay, yeah, let's just do it.
Everyone's already read them.
I, I did, there was a, there was a couple of things, um. Line nine, Emma's last name is misspelled, half of it's missing.
Sure.
Um. Line twenty two. This again, this is about five Homer, Mr. Efron reviewed the minor exterior alterations, including removing the window on and replacing the windows, they replacing the windows? I don't remember that coming up.
No.
So.
Put up screening.
Yeah, so it says replacing the windows on line twenty two, which. I I didn't think we discussed.
Okay.
They're going to fog them or something.
Yeah, line twenty three. He also reported that the interior would be gutted and fully renovated, it's just missing a D on the end. And um. And then line forty six. It says the word light, L I T E, and I think it should be lit, L I T. That's it. That's all I found.
Well, one, one, quick one, uh, forty one, forty two, forty three. The app can respond to that, most of the lot off, for example, parking and zoning district does not require a certain number of spaces. And the potential for parking in the lot across the street is being pursued. Is that accurate? I I don't think it was being pursued, it's a private lot, there's no.
No.
He said he talked about making an agreement with the.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right, that's fine, sorry, I I didn't.
They're definitely in talks.
Okay, got it.
But but nothing has happened yet, so they can't promise anything.
Got it, okay.
Those were all my observations too, so I'm ready.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of May fourteenth as corrected?
So moved.
Second.
As moved by Dale and seconded by Tricia, uh, roll call, vote?
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Phil Ruberton, aye.
Preston Crowe, aye, that passes four zero. Yay, we did something.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
Put your arm in ground.
I move that we end this meeting at ten thirty five P M.
Second.
All in favor of roll call?
W P N, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Phil Ruberton, aye.
Preston Crowe, aye, thank you and good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, guys, I'll talk to everybody offline.